Did we actually get, um, new sheets from Gail?
No.
They sent them electronically.
All right. We are ready to begin. I'd like to open tonight's meeting with Georgetown Planning Board Wednesday, June 25th, 2014. And we're gonna begin with approval of minutes. Howard, if you want to start. Anything?
Uh, we received a few comments. Those have been incorporated into the minutes. We're making an effort to reduce a little bit of the length of the minutes so in the future the board can discuss changes after meeting.
Does anybody have any?
I see mine electronically. We'll just type it.
Yeah, I see it.
Well, everyone's all set? All right? Have a motion to approve?
Move please.
Approve the minutes of, uh, of May 20th, of June 11th.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Correspondents, sir?
Uh, we have three items of correspondence that the, uh, board has received. Georgetown Building Supply and Georgetown Police Department both sent in some correspondence that we can bring up under, uh, new business. And, uh, we received a report from Larry Graham for a 60 East Main Street as the athletic facilities, and that can be brought up during the public hearing.
All right. Anybody have any comments, sir? All right. Moving on to vouchers.
Uh, under vouchers, uh, there is one voucher and one purchase order. And the reason why, um, it will not be placed under here is that the purchase order is not yet part of, uh, under the general count in the way that we need to process it. Um, the purchase order, um, is to the vendor of Joseph Merritt and Company. It's for the new printer scanner that, uh, the planning office is purchasing to be shared by other land use departments, and other land use departments will be, um, adding in for the purchase. The purchase order, as stated, has a cost of $9,445. You received an email from the planning office dated June 18th, which outlines the planning office, um, their commitment, and as well as other four departments that will be adding in, uh, to help finance the purchase of the scanner plotter. Uh, I will note, uh, the building inspector's office, uh, their amount. They receive an annual number from, uh, GOTMS as part of the online permitting, uh, software program that other departments in around town has access to, and part of their annual numbers is going towards the purchase of the printer scanner. So even though the number that's on the purchase order, uh, the, the planning board's budget is for $4,445. The total commitment and the total purchase cost, uh, there's a $500 bonus. That delta is being held in reserve for the purchase of inks in the future.
Uh, how much? 500?
Uh, 500 and...
1,200.
500 dollars?
1,200 for a three-year onsite service.
Yes, service for the ink cartridges.
Oh, yeah. Here it is, down here.
The, right, the 1,200 dollars, uh, is for an optional three-year onsite service agreement.
But there, there is money being held out for the toner, or whatever they call it.
For the ink, and, and the way it was explained to me is when these get shipped new, the ink lines are empty. And so when you charge the lines, you use up about half of the cartridges. So when one of them starts running low, which will be pretty soon, we'll have the reserve money to purchase additional ink.
Do you have any sense of how much ink you're gonna burn through? Or that the town is gonna burn through?
Uh, given the current use of the color plotter, it's not gonna be substantial.
Cool.
But the benefit is, uh, the, the color scanner. For, um, if any office or board receives a full size, we don't have the capabilities to scan full size. Quite often we get requests and we need to allow people to sign out the only copies that we have for previous subdivisions or site plans. This will allow us to scan, keep in file, and print out and charge.
And have a soft, soft copy that you can just print.
Soft copy for the archives, electronic for quick access.
Mm-hmm. And you'll charge for those services?
We do.
Yeah. How, how, um, how are you guys gonna share the costs going forward with who pays how much for when it's time to get into a repair or something like that?
It's, it's, uh, informal agreement of, of, well, we purchased the next round, you need to purchase the, the next. They have revolving funds that they can tap into.
Are you comfortable with that informal agreement versus just making sure?
I am. Yeah. The, the paper doesn't get used very fast, but when it does, it's usually Concom will buy a, a roll and that will last for six months, and then the other land use departments will kick in.
Yeah. It looks like, uh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just, I was just thinking that if, for whatever reason, someone ends up leaving a department or something, and scribble a note or memo.
Yeah, well, that's the way it's happened previously, but with the operational software that goes with this, there's gonna be a lot better tracking mechanism that goes on about keying in which department you're from and what you're using, and we'll be able to better track who's using the most and the, and the least, and be able to get supplies appropriately.
Yeah, it looks like we're, we're picking up about half the, the price of it. So it would certainly be a good idea if, moving forward, we make sure that, um, we can track how much of the total cost is being used by each department, and maybe just come up with that.
It's, there's an equity that, that's understood.
Yeah. Okay.
So which is the number? Can you clarify which is the number that you're looking for?
Well, we need to provide the purchase order for, um, and I've informed the, the town accountant of this. The purchase order that needs to be sent to Joseph Merritt, which the planning board is signing tonight, is for $9,445.
That's the number we're approving?
But you're signing that number on the purchase order, but you're approving per the email, the planning office, a commitment of 4,445.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Eric?
Um, the, the email says the planning office has committed $4,445. I have the following funds committed, I being you, Howard Clinton. Uh, I have the following funds committed from your respective departments, consecration commission, building inspector, water department, highway department. Please confirm you are able to fulfill the commitment from either revolving fund or local water rate with Mary if you must encumber funds. And that was June 18th. Was, did you get anything in writing from those departments?
Not written, but I, I had conversations with them, and they said we're committed after this email. Yes.
Okay. So they're all good? Water department's gonna give a thousand, highway's giving a thousand, building inspector's 2,500, and Concom's a thousand?
Correct.
Good. Good.
Uh, I don't, I don't know if it's just me or not, but, um, it, it's all a verbal understanding right now, per se.
Right.
I'm just a big fan of...
Having it in writing.
Yeah. It, even if it's just a memo, internal memo to everybody or something.
Right. A reply to, to these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that might...
It would be helpful.
Be helpful, yeah.
Could I ask two questions? Um, fiscal year ends in a week?
Yes.
We have how much for remaining funds?
After the...
We have excess of $4,450.
After we encumber the 4,450, we've got approximately 2,000.
Okay.
And I was just waiting for, for this to, to get processed, as well as anything from the past few weeks. And if we have a thousand dollars remaining, I plan on encumbering funds for the purchase of a new laptop.
Laptop.
Yeah.
Understood. I was just wondering if, you know, if, out of some kind of snafu, if one of them were unable to actually come up with it, if we had a little excess in the fund to cover the 4,450.
To cover them? It's a possibility, but it, it's gone through with this, that they're committed.
Mm-hmm.
How old was the other laptop? It seems like we bought a couple laptops.
That's the only laptop.
Just that one?
Yeah.
How old was yours?
Seven years old.
The, the one I've been using belongs to the broadcast, uh, to the cable television.
Oh, boy.
So the, the plan is to purchase one for Wendy that's more up to date, and this one, uh, the expense of updating this to current operating software of, of seven, Windows 7 or something, is just as much as if we were to buy a new laptop, so she'll get the new one.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, this just needs to function for overhead projection. If I ever need to travel or something, I'll take the new one.
Mm-hmm. So do you end up, so do you have a laptop or not?
No.
And when, when, okay, that's another discussion, but you, you need one.
Yeah.
That's pretty basic.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so, HL...
If I may, I'll make a motion to, um, to sign the purchase order for the HPT 250, 2, 2,500 PSE printer, and cost being 94, $9,445.
Second.
Motion's out there.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye. All opposed?
All set there? unanimous. Um, HL Graham Associates?
Yeah, Larry Graham, uh, HL Graham Associates, technical review engineer, has sent a bill for his technical review of turning in an amount of $1,655. And that will be coming out of an M account, that won't be coming out of the, the board's account.
This, this is more or less what we, if I may, um, this is more or less what we treat as the vouchers.
Right.
I'll make a motion to pay the vouchers in total of 1,655.
Second. I have a motion to approve. And second, HL Graham's voucher. Uh, any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nope. All right. I'll sit there. Uh, public hearings. Well, Larry's not here yet, so...
Uh, do you want to take the A&amp;Rs?
Ooh.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I'm sorry, I skipped right over there. My bad.
You can start setting up, and you know where the cameras are.
I think I've been here before.
You want to, you're good.
Once or twice.
We'll see. And just so the board knows, um, I've got a, my lightsaber, and there's one in the middle, and there's one over by Bob. So share and share alike.
I have a pen. I only have a riddle.
Which one are we hearing? Heather Road?
Heather Road.
He's well. That's the problem.
Good evening. My name is Bob Grasso from N.J. Lancer's for record, for the record. Uh, this is Heather Road, lots C and D. Basically, what we're doing is we're just readjusting, uh, a lot line right here and in the back here. The original lots, uh, D was shown in yellow right here. Uh, that's lot C. And lot B was the yellow and then the magenta line all the way through. Um, the lot line adjustment plan was just adding 25 feet to lot D, which would make it a total frontage of 150, uh, feet of area, I mean, of frontage. And, um, it's in the R, I believe it's in the RA district, uh, which is only requiring 125. Uh, and we have the sufficient area of 29,000, which is, uh, the area is only private 15,000. Um, we're taking parcel B off of, which is a non-billable lot to be combined with lot C, and we're adding parcel A, which is not a non-billable lot, and adding it to D. So this is the outcome, the magenta line, lot D, and that, that final area is 241,175 square feet. And lot D would be shortened up by taking off parcel B and adding, uh, parcel A, and that, uh, total area would be 29,123, uh, 29,123 square feet. Mr. Maripati, uh, the owner of both lots, is actually, um, putting a conservation restriction on lot C, uh, which was approved by the conservation commission last week, uh, with the, um, combining, uh, the Green Belt and the conservation commission, Georgetown Conservation, with the restriction that was, it was finally approved by the town last week. So the new owner, when he owns, uh, he's becoming selling lot D, he will own lot C and D, but he'll have restrictions on lot D, uh, saying there'll be no building, um, nothing, it's pretty set, that nothing will ever happen on that except for like hiking, like a biking trail, or nobody, you know, anything.
Uh, I just want to note some history for the board. If you, if the board recalls a previous A&R approval for, for this property that was done last year with Jim Maripati, and he created, uh, four lots out of the A&R, two on the other side, um, one with an existing and, and...
Yeah.
One which was another conformance. So the board has fully vetted out the ability to, to approve an A&R, even though Heather Road is a, a private way in this area.
So we just moved the lines? That's it?
Yeah, I just moved. We added 25 more feet to the frontage, and we took off some, a great amount of apple and off of lot D. So Mr. Maripati wanted, he's really into tree preserving, he...
Great.
And so there's some big, huge pines on there that he likes to save. Um, he just...
And he's gonna sell everything?
Yeah, he's selling. He's, he's down North Carolina.
North Carolina, yeah.
How, any? Harry?
Um, just, just a que, is, is the, the lot that's being carved off right now, is there an existing wall in there?
Uh, no.
Or is that not at all?
It's vacant lot, and, um, we're proposing a house in a subject system on that lot, which we've done test pits, uh, with the board of health. Um, it's sand and gravel, um, no water table went down 10 feet, there's no water table there, uh, because actually the roads here and, and it just, just, it down gradient to, uh, Kentucky Pond, right down here. We're up so high with sand and gravel, we didn't see water at all on that lot.
If I could just ask one more question?
Sure.
And it meets current zoning for a single family.
Frontage and area.
Even though it's moving in a little bit there?
Yes, yes.
Still think, 'cause you have excess?
Yes.
Bob?
No questions.
Mr. Tim?
No.
All set? All set? I would tend to...
Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate?
It is?
I will make a motion, um, to endorse the A&R, uh, entitled plan of land located in Georgetown, Massachusetts. Lot C and D, parcel A and B, Heather Road, Georgetown, Mass. Stamped by, who is that? Robert M. Grasso on 6, 16, 2014.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, sir.
And when does the MYR get signed?
Got one?
There is a MYR and a paper copy, uh, up on the table here with a Sharpie, if the board wishes to, uh, sign that. If, if you can wait a few minutes, we have another A&R, so they can get up and sign everything at once.
Sure. Thank you.
All right.
Somebody got a little too much sun.
So let's, uh, next A&R, Howard?
For 111, 113 West Street. The, uh, applicant's engineer is here, just needs a moment to set up. Um, I provided what the planning office knows in the packet, and the engineer can correct me if I'm wrong, but in brief, there, the, um, one of the property, properties was subject to, uh, a, uh, finding by the zoning board and approved for a setback, uh, nonconformity. And what happened was that the addition was built onto the property, but it was built in a way that it wasn't meeting what the zoning board approved. So that nonconformity, uh, by approving or endorsing the A&R plan, you would bring the property in conformance with the finding by the zoning board.
It was a variance. It was granted.
A variance that was gr, uh, thank you. That was granted.
Actually, we were two. One in 85 and one in 96, right?
Right. I believe the, the one that was granted in 96 is the one that, uh, the A&R is, is being, um, sought and fixed. Is that correct?
Do we have copies of those?
Of?
No.
Oh, I have copies. My name is Pat Flaherty, and I'm a Lancer Day or civil engineer, and, uh, I prepared the plan, and, um, one of the abudders, Dan Denine, is here tonight, and Theo Capaldo is on vacation. She was, she had to go. So I have copies of the variances. My copies, if you want to take a look at them.
I think I was on one of them.
I remember this one.
Maybe I could explain?
Yeah. I apologize, they should have been included in the packet. I thought they were.
Yeah, I think, I think if I recall correctly, um, this applicant was gonna come back when, once the property abutting them was gonna be sold, because she wanted a piece to square out her property yard. They were gonna swap land so that she could accommodate her, and evidently, they must be pleading on selling next to her. Is that true?
Yeah, Dan is gonna sell his property.
Would you, would you like to give...
Yeah. Would you pass that to Eric?
This is 113 West Street, is this property to your left, and that's Dan Denine's property. And this, Dr. Catalo's property is on the 111 over here on this side. Um, hers is boarded by a brook and stone wall. Dan's is, uh, has a stone wall on, right on West Street, and they all meet the frontage re, both meet frontage requirements, area requirements, and, uh, Dan's meets the sideyard requirement. Um, I don't think the front yard counts because this building was here before zoning, so kind of have to let that go.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, probably was.
But, um, the one next door, um, the house next door had several additions put on it, and not only is there a problem with the lot line, the lot line goes through part of her garage. So it's a real problem.
It was creative. We got done with that one.
I tried to show with this dashed line here. Uh, but, um, it, it wasn't, it wasn't hard to work out because I found all the markers, and you stood on one and you couldn't see the next because the garage was in the way, so it was pretty certain.
Yeah.
Okay? So what we did is we, we located the driveway, and we tried to, we tried to straighten out everything, get, keep the driveway on the line, on the right property, and, and the result was that Mr. Denine and, uh, Theo Capaldo will swap equal pieces to make it easier.
Yeah. That was her plan.
And, and so that's where we are right now.
Yeah.
So the lot frontages don't change, it's just the, the lot line internal to the two properties?
Right, we kept it the same front corner, same...
Yeah. What was her name? McCrayne that owned that originally? Was it McCrayne or was it Mick something? Before Denine?
McGlynn.
McGlynn. That's it.
That was, I think that's Dan Zant, was it?
My wife's aunt.
Your wife's aunt.
Your wife's aunt, that's right.
Yeah.
The Pibbities.
Right.
Right. Well, she donated all the land in the back of her to the water department, so all of that was donated when she was the only house there, you know, and sold a piece, I guess, to next door.
Yeah.
Somehow, was there a boulder or rocks or something in the way?
I don't know.
That they couldn't square it off.
I don't know. It was before me. Can't blame me for it.
Some things I remember, other things I don't.
But so, this, this will allow access around the side of the house, too, to the back, you know, 20 feet of access.
That's right.
And, uh, and it allows room for storing snow now. We, we didn't have it before. The snow wound up on the wrong property, and so it, it seems like, uh, Mr. Denine and, and Theo are gonna be happy with this, this, uh, new lot line.
Why didn't you sign it? Chief, you should have signed it.
You got it, you got your signatures. Um, so did you have anything else, sir?
No.
Harry?
Um, I, I'm not understanding how, how, um, a, a building, a dwelling could have been expanded over a lot line.
And it even got a variance, yeah.
Please, I don't understand.
Well, I'm wondering if it got the variance prior to it being expanded, or, I, I'm not getting it.
I, I, well, I...
Because I'm, I'm seeing a, a plot plan here that says the house was 45 feet from the lot line in 85.
Um, that plot plan is a mortgage inspection plan?
Uh-huh.
And it's written all over, not to use it for anything but mortgage inspection purposes. That's one of the problems when...
Where'd you get that plan? If I may.
This thing, I'm a surveyor, I, I surveyed it. I did this.
Right, and you got it from Plan Book 163, Plan 82, and Plan Book 324, Plan 1?
Yeah, whatever the references are, yeah, I've got them on the other side of the plan.
You pulled them?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, and I did it on the ground, on the ground survey located iron rods, drill holes, the houses.
Was a, was the house showing on either one of those two planes?
No. No. Uh, Mr. Denine's house was shown on one.
Yeah, that was the...
And there's nothing shown on, on the others.
Yeah, that came later. That was probably before, before, in the 70s, 60s, probably before zoning. And, uh, it was kind of complicated because, um, it was two additions. One we, nobody ever saw, there was probably no process in place because it was so old. But the second time, when we, she did the addition, then we got involved with it, because by that time, the building inspector denied it. So we had to get involved with it and, and make the other one legal for the variance.
And she created a variance.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, did you have anything else right now, Harry?
Uh, no, no, thank you.
Bob?
Who?
Tim?
Oh.
Um, Howard, are you, are you comfortable with it? What's up?
The only statement, uh, I would make is that if the board is not comfortable in endorsing it tonight, and wishes instead for additional information, the, uh, application was, was made to the planning office, and you have 21 days to approve it, so you still have one meeting. You, you, if there's information you wish to hear or research to be done in order to feel more comfortable endorsing it, this can be brought up in the next meeting of the planning board, and the decision have to be made that night.
Uh, let, let's just go through, uh, for myself, I don't need any more information, but I don't know if anyone else...
No, I'm fine with this.
I, I'd just like to hear from the neighbor.
Is the neighbor here?
I would hope that we, I'd like to hear from him.
Sure. Yep, Bob?
I have no questions.
I'm good with it.
All right. Sir?
Yeah, I'm Dan Denine. I own 113 West.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Dan Denine.
Dan Denine.
Uh, Dan, I'm sorry, could you come up for the microphones?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Is that your last name, sir?
D-I-N-E-E-N.
Thank you.
What, uh, what is your question?
What is your question?
I just wanted to make sure that you, sir, are aware of this happening.
Oh, I was aware of it.
There's no public notice to an A and R plan, there's nothing like that. If I could file an A and R, my next door neighbor would never know it.
No.
Oh, he signed the application, but, so that's why he's here, you know?
Okay.
Flesh and blood guy.
Good to know.
Better than a signature.
Good to know.
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking for. Happy with that?
Yeah, I'm very satisfied. You know, it solves our problems. And it opened it up so we can, a house is for sale, it's been sold. And it's just moving the process along.
Great.
That's what we're trying to do. Look at the paperwork.
Are you leaving town?
Just moving to Groveland.
Okay.
That's far, huh? To you. All right.
You're not like us.
I'm good with it.
You all set? I'm, I'm on. So do I hear a motion from anybody?
I make a motion to accept the A and R request for 111 and 113 West Street.
Could you modify that to replace "accept" with "endorse"?
Accept with endorse?
No, exchange the word in your motion of "accept" over to "endorse."
Okay, accept to endorse.
Second.
Any discussion?
Would you repeat the motion, I'm sorry, Mr. Jim?
Good question. What I heard, well, Tilly, do you want to repeat that or I'll take a stab at it?
Yeah, go ahead.
To?
I guess I didn't say it right.
To endorse the, to endorse the A and R plan for 111, 113 West Street, prepared for Theodore F. Capaldo, June seventeenth, two thousand fourteen.
Thank you.
Set?
Yep.
Okay. So, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Manus? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
If, if the board is okay with taking a four or five minute break so all the MIRs could be signed and so the two engineers could leave the meeting?
It is a recess, we can talk about it later, but.
He actually wanted, like, the rear, right? Here we are. Had a pipe.
Okay, everyone, we're back online. Continue the Georgetown Planning Board Wednesday's, June twenty-fifth, meeting. To go into public hearings, Howard?
The first one we have is a special permit for sixty East Main Street Athletic Fields with parking wreck. It's continued from May twenty-eighth. And while they're getting set up, I just want to note that we don't have an overhead projection. They'll be handing out eleven by seventeens. And there's also a Form H that the board should vote to accept, and then the clerk needs to sign.
The new clerk.
Oh.
Man, I knew that workload was just triple.
Howard, where's, where's the, the permit, did you got it?
Yes.
You're going to be able to handle it. And it'd be great if you could sign that in blue.
That's old, you know, that concept. Because of the quality of.
Open force, I think.
Yeah, we're gonna. So what I'd like to do is open it up to you guys. Do your presentation, and then what I'd like to do is go through the board with each person taking their turn to ask their questions. Ending up, starting back with Howard, but then go to you guys. Did you have anything else?
No, just to vote on the Form H, and just a note for the board that received tonight is a letter from Gail. It was addressed to me, June twenty-fifth. You received it in your supplemental packet tonight, it's two pages. Single sheet, but on both sides. And then they're handing out eleven by seventeens.
This is in the supplemental, though?
Right. Maybe the, is it the last page here?
Awesome.
To read faster.
Thank you.
You gotta vote for this, do the exception.
So I need a motion to.
Mr. Chairman, we'd like to take a motion that the, the new clerk signed the, the Form H to extend the period of time for decision to?
September thirtieth.
That's exactly what I said, Jim. September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Do I have a second?
I volunteer.
Jim's got a second? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So this is, so you guys take it away, and this is all new information we're getting tonight, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So based off of the last hearing we had with the board, there were a couple of items discussed, I think, that were, that were not really memorialized in a comment letter or anything like that, but there were notes that we had taken at that last meeting for some additional, I think, pretty minor design edits. And what we've submitted in this letter is, is the explanation, kind of the recap of what those were. So what I'd like to do is go through those with you. Does everyone have the letter in front of them? It's.
We need more copies of the eleven by seventeen.
Oh. Do you have the first one? I had a B eleven by seventeen.
Will you guys please?
We just get one.
Is this the letter of June twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll get two copies of that.
Oh, wait, they're sitting right here. Sorry, they're already here. Could you guys just introduce yourselves?
John Perry with Gail Associates. I'm Ryan Morrison with Gail Associates. And with the engineering consultant for the Recreation Commission. So we'll step through these, these were, again, I think verbal comments that the board had discussed with us the last time we were here, so these shouldn't be any surprise or anything like that, I wouldn't think. On the cover sheet, we've added the requested special permit note, what we're going for on Sheet C-101, on the layout plan. There was at Station, kind of to the right of the page, at Station five plus eighty-five, right where the road turns from Batuminous to gravel, there was kind of a sliver of grass that would be left over, and it was decided that would be kind of hard to maintain, so we redesigned that to kind of square that off. We've also provided a double swing gate up at Station three hundred roughly, so just after the church parking lot. So there's a swing gate that would block off, prohibit traffic from coming through the site when it's not in use. We've also called out low maintenance, a ground cover, field mix on the, on the slope that is just to the north of the roadway in that area as well. We've installed, we've provided a sign at the entrance indicating the hours of park use on Sheet C-102. Still layout and grading, just moving down the road. We redimensioned the angled parking spaces. We softened the jog in the sidewalk at the softball field, so that's down by kind of the bottom right portion of the site. We used to have kind of a strange triangular movement there in the sidewalk, and we've radius that off to make it more gradual. We've added a note in the skate park area that that concrete slab should be tan in color. We've provided plantings along the UFP property. In the, kind of near where we have Section CC, towards the middle to left-hand side of the page.
I don't, I don't, I don't see those.
I don't see that one.
There, there are symbols there for some plantings, we are calling them out, per se. Move the fence back along the property line and place plantings near that.
Oh, those four circles?
Yeah.
Could you point that out to me? I'm not following this.
See those four symbols?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And I don't, yeah, there's no key to it, so.
Oh, I see, okay.
Key's on the front page or?
Okay.
Talk to follow, we're going to key, you know?
It's all right, we'll just.
Yeah. We had some, before we had wood posts with cable in the, in the middle of the parking lot, the gravel lot, acting as kind of a guardrail system. And the thought was that having the cable there, having the guard, having the wood posts was a good idea to separate vehicles, but having the cable there could be a safety issue if you had, I think, probably a small child running back and forth. So we kept the posts, but we took the cable out. And we also updated that detail, which is further into the, into the detail sheets.
And there's curb stops everywhere, right?
And there's curb stops everywhere, so. On C-103, also still layout materials planned, moving closer down towards the softball field, baseball field. In lieu of the guardrail that comes along the road, on the right-hand side, if you're driving along the road, we've replaced that with stone walls. So we're going to relocate some of those stones that we can reuse on site.
That's reclaimed from onsite.
From onsite, correct. And it says relocated stone wall, so we'll reclaim that material. C-104.
I'm sorry, could you just point out where that is, that stone wall is? Is that this over here?
That's this right here.
Yes.
Oh, I got it, yeah.
That used to be the.
Yep.
C-104, and the grading drainage plan, Sheet one. We provided a two-foot level area behind the sidewalk. Basically, what we, what we had before was, right in the back of the sidewalk, we had our two-to-one slope going down, and there wasn't really any sort of shoulder. We provide that shoulder now, and we've actually updated the detail. That would be, Ryan's right, on C, on C-101, if you want to flip back and look at that, we've updated that cross-section detail, it shows that condition. Which I think was a pretty good idea. On Sheet, I'm going to skip C-501 and come back to that, on Sheet 507. Metal posts for the signs, we're using four-by-four pressure-treated posts.
Five oh seven or five oh one?
Um, five oh seven. I skipped five oh one, I'm going to come back to that in a second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
And then on SK one, we added a new sheet with the.
In five oh seven, you're talking about the signpost foundations.
Correct.
Okay.
And on this sketch plan, we've added the site distance triangles. And we're showing that there is adequate site distances along East Main Street. And going back to C-501, we have, there was a discussion about removing, under the pervious pavement sidewalk, there was a discussion about removing a layer, which is clearly would be done as a matter of course, but also removing the B soil horizon beneath that. And we were showing that, and that's fine, but I wanted to, I think that that wasn't set in stone, and that was kind of something that we should consider. My comment would be that the B horizon is, can vary in depth. That's typically considered usually fairly sandy material, it's adequate for a septic system. My opinion is that it's adequate to infiltrate water underneath the pervious pavement. And that's just an added cost that the town would have to incur by removing that all the way down to the sea. and that's just an added cost that the, the town would have to incur by removing that all the way down to the C horizon. Again, we're showing it as such, if that's the way it needs to be, then that's what we'll do, um, but-
If I may, Mr. Chairman, that, if I just, that was in response to Larry's comment about the, the gap, right?
I believe so.
Okay.
I believe so. Um, and those, those are all of the edits that we've made here. I don't know if we want to have a small discussion on the, on the B horizon, to see if we want, if that's something that we still want to do, but I, if that's something that we need to do.
So, so you're all set right now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I think what I'd like to do, if the board's okay, is I'd like to go to Larry. And, uh, he had issued a June tenth, I think it was, letter, and, uh, so Larry, if you could pick up on that.
Yeah, I, I had sent a letter to the board, which was just forwarded on to Gale's June tenth. Um, and they responded June twenty-fourth by a draft to me. I don't know if it, if it ended up getting to the board or not. A couple of things, John, what you just said, I, um, I see your two-foot shoulder from about the turn-in to the church parking, uh, northerly.
I, I apologize for interrupting you. So you, you got a response on the twenty-fourth?
Yes, I, I got a draft from them.
Did you send one to him?
Did you send it to Howard?
We didn't send it to Howard. We'd sent him a draft version that wasn't finalized, because we wanted to discuss some of our edits before, making sure we were on the same page.
Oh, okay, okay.
Unfortunately, we weren't able to have that discussion, so it never got sent out.
Okay?
Yes.
Go ahead. So just before the church parking lot, I don't see your two-foot shoulder on your grading plan on C one oh four. And that's probably as critical a point as anywhere, you know, on the property. I, I see what you're saying further back, so just want to look at that and, uh, as far as the, uh, removal of the C layer, that, that kind of gets into the discussion of one of the points that I made that DEP said. DEP says, you know, to put the reservoirs down, uh, the reservoir, a total depth of twenty-four inches minimum, and you're, you had previously shown nineteen, and then you answered by justif, you answered justifying that, that that was, um, due to the fact that it was going to be used as a sidewalk, and, and because it's not low, or it's low-low bearing, that you wouldn't have to do that. My interpretation of DEP's stormwater standards in that sketch that they give you under pervious pavement is that, that's for, that's for infiltration, that's not for loading.
It's, uh, it's for, it's-
And those, those, that ties into your removal of the C layer, because you're gonna, you know, you're gonna get into probably twenty-
You get into some of that B layer, yeah, if you wanted to do that whole horizon.
B layer.
Right. So what we're, I guess what our point of view is that you, they do recommend that, um, reservoir depth, so basically, there's the three inches or so of permeable pavement, and then there's a small choker course of, um, three-quarter inch stone, and then you have a sand bed layer, it's like a filter, usually about twelve inches, and then below that, you have a crushed stone reservoir, they call it. You have that reservoir for detention storage typically. If you want to treat it like a detention basin or infiltration basin. In this case, we're not doing that. We're really just providing the permeable pavement as a pervious surface to, to not have impervious surface.
But where does that water that can't be stored go? I'm sorry.
Well, in, in that regard, when, when DEP has that standard and, and puts it in their booklet as a standard as a minimum, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not satisfied in your response that, uh, we shouldn't be doing the minimum. But the bigger question for me, before we get into the details of what I wrote and how they responded, is I am, I just don't think that this sidewalk should be put in the location that it's being proposed at the top of that slope, right on the property line, with the removal of trees and tree roots, which are right now keeping that bank in its present slope condition. And when we start pulling out all those roots, um, and regrading down the vegetated slope, which is going to destroy that vegetation, I think we're gonna have severe issues along that bank going down to the home company place. I am very much opposed, I won't make a recommendation to this board, on my letterhead, that that sidewalk be placed where it's being proposed, pervious pavement or not. You go beyond that, I have a lot of questions which Gale has provided some answers to with respect to the pervious pavement and how that addresses the stormwater management, if the sidewalk goes there, and I, I'm not comfortable with those answers. To the point that I'm gonna tell this board, if you want to, if you want to approve that sidewalk, and you want to approve forest pavement, I'm gonna ask that you go some, go to another engineer who might have more experience and more depth than this, and I admit that I don't, nor do I think anybody in this area does.
You're correct.
I don't think, besides UNH, which I've seen, I've looked at all their material, DEP, uh, formats a lot of their stuff based on UNH's study and UNH's paved parking, uh, pervious pavement, parking up there, and I've seen it several times. But it's, although it's, it's been around for a long time, it's still new. I don't know of a paving company that's done it in the area. I don't know that it will ever happen on this site, because of the limited amount of work that's here. Now, if it was a huge mall parking lot, somebody might gin up their, their plant mix to do this. But I don't, I doubt that you'll ever see this in practicality on this site. I know that that's not what everybody wants to hear, but that's the way I feel about it.
Do, do you have any other solution? Excuse me.
That, that, that's okay.
Do you have any other alternative solution? To, to solve this?
Any other, I don't have the solutions, I might have a suggestion. There's, there's a twenty-foot wide pavement right now with a vertical granite curb. If you consider going narrower on the pavement and, and making a narrow gra, uh, grass shoulder, where you could retain those trees and not change the grade on the backside, take the trees and the roots out and not change that, that will give kids someplace to walk off of the pavement. My thought is that this, and I know this drive might expand going further back into the depths of the property and, and other properties, but for the, for the skate park and one ball field, I, I don't see that this sidewalk would probably be used by many, many people. And if it is, it's gonna be used by the same people with the same, uh, purposes. In other words, the kids are gonna be walking to go to or from a ball field. People that are driving are gonna be driving kids, are having watch the game or going to game back and forth. So it's not like, you know, they're disassociated with one another as to what their purpose is for being on that road or on that sidewalk. So, I, I just don't, I, I just think that the sidewalk in that location has always bothered me. Um, I'm not comfortable and won't make a recommendation to this board to accept it.
Okay, um, I just want to go back to these guys. Just for the record.
Sure, sure. Because of the two ponds, there's no other place to access this facility other than from Lisa Lane, which the kids will walk down Lisa-
Could you just introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Jim Devan from the Park and Rec. That's fine. So the sidewalk's there for a number of reasons. One is the kids get out of school, and that, those, that field will be available for softball, for girls' softball and everything else. Kids from Lisa Lane and that area, when they, when they want to walk to school, they'll go through the, they'll go through, there's a, there's an old lumber, uh, logging trail, and they'll access that road to get, to walk to school. So, if there was a way to get through the ponds with another sidewalk, but that's the only way, if someone was to walk to that facility, they would have to come up that road from anywhere from the center of Georgetown to the park. They can't go through the ponds, they can't cut through people's property. So asking them to walk up potentially where a, a narrow road on the side, it just, I don't see, I understand what you're saying. It is, it is a tight spot, it's not ideal, but, I, you know, I mean, we talk about, there is a safety factor, and I think the road's narrow, and there should be a sidewalk. If the road is wide, maybe, but people are gonna be kind of going up the hill. I, I understand your, your reservation, but to say there shouldn't be a sidewalk is just as crazy, because now you're not worrying about the trees, you're worried about the kids.
Well, probably, there is another answer to that, and that is to cut into that bank. Yes, that makes that wall higher, and we're trying to keep that wall down for cost. But that's the other answer, is to push everything, uh, easterly.
Away from?
Away from that bank, away from the trees, away from, you know, that area of concern.
But we don't own that property.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to get back into that back and forth thing, no, but-
I understand.
Did you, did you want to say more? Did you have more to add to that?
No, no, I, I would have been a great solution if you owned the property.
Okay, okay. What I, Larry, did you want to touch on anything else before I go to the board?
Well, I think, I think that's a big general thing that should probably be kicked around here before we get into any specifics or details. They don't really matter, depending on the outcome of this.
Okay.
Can I make one more comment on the pervious pavement?
Please.
Just going back to the reservoir in the bottom of the stone there, that, not to beat a dead horse, but that's really to provide detention storage, if you're doing that. In this case, what we're really trying to do is mimic existing conditions, which right now is a, a slope of some vegetation, which is a pervious surface, at about a six or seven percent through there. And there's no detention storage under that lone and seed now. Most of the rainwater that is there runs right off, even though it is grassed. What we're doing is just putting the permeable pavement down, which is very, very pervious. Um, UNH has videos on their website of water trucks just opening up with a fire hose, and it just, ten feet away is bone dry. So it infiltrates water very, very quickly. And then below that, we're putting twelve inches of a more, um, permeable base layer, and the fact that there's no reservoir in the bottom, um, shouldn't really matter, because we're not trying to detain the water, we're just trying to infiltrate the same amount, if not more, back to the ground that's there today.
I'll, I'll hold my comments still. I'm just gonna start with you, Tim, right now, just go around.
Well, I can see why Larry is not keen on putting that sidewalk in there, if it involves taking out that line of trees and potentially open, opening up silk flow, whatever, else going down that embankment. I remember on, uh, that access road by Longview Apartments, where it backs up to the property, um, like, like on the left-hand side, as you go out that road to the acc, uh, go out, go out the access road, the, the other side from the apartments, there was a pretty steep embankment there, and that got washed out year after year after year, and they'd go back up. Mirror would go back up and try and regrade it and get the grass to grow, and it was just like this. I mean, eventually, it's pretty good now, there's still some, like, saggy, like, some dugout areas there, so I can see why you probably don't think it's a great idea to overly disturb that banking. It probably will cause some sort of washout of whatever materials there. Is, is there another solution to prevent that? I don't know, I'm not an engineer. The water flow is one thing, but if it's gonna keep washing material down into the other property at UFP, that is, but, you know, I don't know how happy they'll be about that. He seems okay with the water flow. I mean, that, that parking lot has a good slope to it.
Yeah.
Water's just gonna flow right across it, but that's not really where the parking lot is, that's where the building is. So I, I don't know, even water there, where's, how's that gonna be channeled away from the building? And then, your point is that it's gonna be equal to or less than the flow that's there now. Again, I'm not an engineer, I can't say that's true or not true. He's an engineer, he says it's true. But he's an engineer, Larry seems to beg to disagree. So I, I'm kind of like in a quandary, I like, I think Larry's got a legitimate argument, but I'm not capable of, you know, through education, I can't say who's right and who's wrong.
Yeah.
But I hate cutting, the, cutting all those trees out of there, it's not a great idea if you didn't have to, if there was some other way. And if, talking about moving the sidewalk to the other way, whose property is that? Is that the church?
Church.
Would they like grant you an easement? Have they given all they're gonna give?
Yeah, because I think that we're, we're making non-conforming.
So they can't?
I, I think that's what we, we took as much as we could not to make it non-conforming. So, yeah, I mean, we, we didn't take it, we bought it, we bought what we could. And actually, I mean, we're all involved in that purchase. I would, and I'm not saying we were, I'm saying the town was involved in specing out what we could take, what we thought we could, how much we needed, and leaving them with a, thought a non-conforming lot, I think, is how it worked out. So, yeah.
I don't think it's worth, like, saying a project can't go forward, I just, anything at all we could do, which I, I guess we've already pushed, I guess we're already at that point right now, it sounds like this. But, like, you've done all you can do.
It, it looks on, on C one oh four like there's a significant difference in-
What I want, I'm sorry, what I want to do is I just want everybody on the board to have an opportunity to get out their initial response kind of thing, and then we're gonna kind of circle back around on all of it.
Sure.
Sure. It looks like on the northern side, on the right side of C one oh four, there's significantly more distance, maybe ten feet, uh, between the proposed sidewalk and the lot line, and I'm assuming that that, that dashed line is, is the lot line?
Mm-hmm, correct.
As you get to the, to the road, that, that potential buffer disappears. And I wonder, I, I'm wondering if Larry's concerns are with the entire expanse of this, or if it's mostly towards the street.
Well, it's in the first three hundred feet, uh, which is right, right up to the parking lot entrance.
So it, it includes this area?
No, it doesn't, no, it, it's just at the half point, which is, yeah.
To here?
Yeah.
Right at the beginning?
Mm-hmm.
First three hundred, there's the-
Is, it looks like the sidewalk is right on the lot line for the first maybe, I don't know, eighty feet, hundred feet?
It is, it is. Fence that goes on the, pretty much right on the lot line as well. But, again, that's, that's the area where there's very minimal grading taking place. There's gonna be some, there are some trees there, there's, the slope is more when you start to get, I think even, there's some slope in there, but we're not disturbing a lot of that. You look at the contour lines, they're, they're just off that sidewalk. I believe the easement granted was a twenty-five foot width, and with a twenty-foot road, and then a four-foot sidewalk, and then a half-foot curb, you're leaving yourself with a half-foot, as well as-
Uh, did you have any other question about that?
Uh, just that, it, it appears that, that the slope of that bank is much greater as you move to the right. And it looks, hard to say, but it looks fairly flat in the bottom. That's it.
Okay. Harry?
I, I, I just have a question, because something here that really, really hasn't worked out for me. I know we have a lot of issues with water and, um, and I, I was just gonna lay it out there. The two, the ten, and the hundred-year storm, is this gonna create more, less, or equal amounts of, of runoff from the property?
Less.
Less. And if I may, Larry, you're saying more.
I'm saying that the numbers which they've put in their calculations, their summary, is less as they say. They have- They have used certain parameters to get there. These are supposedly Canton soils up here, they're not Hinckley's down near the bottom, Meramax and Deerfields in the back, which are sands, which water goes through, like I said. These are Canton soils, they're well-drained, that are up on the high point. I don't know that we have any soil tests to support what they're saying is gonna happen in nineteen inches versus twenty-four, or forty-eight for that matter. They used a curve number, which is essentially a percentage of runoff, if you will, of sixty-one. The pavement's ninety-eight, okay? They're treating the porous pavement sidewalk, um, as if it were grass in a good condition. That's what a curve number of sixty-one is, that you plug into the calculations. We're right up on the max recommended slope, which they say is okay, but they didn't provide the board or myself with any examples of it to look at. I understand what U N H does with their fire trucks, but that's as flat as this floor is in here, that's what they have up there.
Larry, did, on those examples, which I think was a very important question, did you guys not, were you not able to find examples? Or you just didn't get to address that issue?
Um, we, we don't have specific examples, um, that are probably analogous to that, that, that we've done recently, that we probably have photos of, or, or data on, things like that. We could probably do some digging on, you know, U N H's or something like that, but we, we weren't able to get that data.
Okay, alright, Larry, go ahead.
Five percent number comes from the D E P.
D E P.
D E P says, says, they suggest you shouldn't go beyond five percent. We're, we're at four and a half.
So...
And there's other parts.
So those are, those are things that go into the calculations, Harry, that get us to a summary that looks good for the hundred-year storm, and the two and the ten. And, and it says that if the hundred-year storm is going to cause off-site flooding, D P's Stormwater Management Center says, it's gonna cause off-site flood. Well, is the runoff, which now goes across the foam company, I'd call that off-site flooding during a rainstorm. You know, it's not harming anyone's property at this point. But if it does, then they must provide, uh, peak discharge attenuation, that's the way the regs read. And all those things, to me, I'm not comfortable with, and I'm just not...
Okay, so you gotta break it down and make it real simple for a simple-minded guy like me.
The hundred-year storm in this area that we all use is like six and a half to seven inches in, in a twenty-four hour period. They provided some feedback here that says their, the pervious pavement will absorb at the rate of eight inches an hour. Well, that's much more than six and a half in twenty-four hours. That's probably brand-new the day they put it down, and I'm gonna say on a flat surface, as opposed to four and a half percent. But when you get the cloud burst, which is what's gonna aggravate the guy next door, it's, it might be two inches in thirty minutes, it might be two inches in two hours, it might be an inch, that's what's gonna run off. It's not gonna, it's not gonna go through that pavement at eight inches an hour rate. And using that curve number of sixty-one is ideal, and in ten years, it won't be sixty-one, in twenty years, it won't be sixty-one. I have all kinds of issues with that, but I have to say, I, I admit to you that I don't have the expertise, or the experience, or the depth in porous pavement. And if this board is of the mind, I think, to accept this, I would recommend that you see if you can search out and find someone who has that kind of experience to make you feel comfortable then about what they've presented to you, 'cause I don't.
I, I, I think instead of perhaps the board going on and getting another engineer for that, I, I think, you know, all we're looking for is to be shown that it works, and so if you can find examples of this in the same situation that's been in place for a while, you know, that would go a long way, a long way, um, to, to giving us some information, and so...
Okay, Harry? Um, I'm a little confused, because ever since I got on this board, it was all, even when I was on the Concom, it was always, does it work? Did the numbers work? Do the calculations work, or do they not? They either do, or they don't. Recently sat through a private three-lot subdivision where the numbers only worked if we did micrograding from one lot to another. In ten years, is that gonna change? Probably, in ten years, a lot can change. I'm looking at this, this is a public project. I'm gonna give it the benefit of the doubt for myself, because the numbers seem to work. Larry, I, I value your opinion, but as you say, you don't have the porous pavement experience. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go with D E P, and I'll go with the numbers you have and the report you generated, but, but Gail, I'm comfortable with it, that it's gonna work out. Other than that, I don't really know what to say.
Okay.
Tilly?
Um, I, I have a question for Larry. When, when you did the calculations, did you plug in the roof from the UFO drainage coming off of that roof?
No, 'cause it's, it's not in, it's not the watershed that we're talking about for, we're talking about from a high point that's up about where the church parking turns in.
Right.
And we're only talking about the twenty-foot wide road and the four-foot sidewalk.
Yeah.
It all drains, that, that water is going off toward the wetland, where, where this water joins it and goes across.
So where the trees are right by UFO, if they were gone, you're saying that the rainwater off of that, their company roof is going to the back?
It's going westerly across.
Westerly?
Yeah, or northwesterly.
So it'll be going in their ha, in their building, in their basement?
No, any, any rain on that slope that I consider in jeopardy with this location of sidewalk is, is, any water that falls on that slope's gonna continue toward their building, toward their property. It can't get back to the sidewalk. Their sidewalk is here, their grading is like this, so this is their sidewalk and the road that's going down to East Main Street. This is the slope that, you know, that's there now, it's working, they've got a wall down there, I don't know if they have any issues with water or not.
Because their building is, I've been inside that building, and, and it goes down, there's a whole floor in the basement. Oh, it's quite a lot, it's very steep.
Yeah.
Uh, high walls to it, I mean, it's, it's in the ground pretty deep. And I'm, you know, if there's water coming off of there, because the trees are gone, my, my thought is, if we can get a way to leave the trees, I think I could be more supportive. Is there?
Well, I think a, a fair amount of the trees will be able to remain, but a portion of this, some of them.
No, no, you need to look at that plant, those, all those trees are coming down.
Not on the, definitely not on our side, not on this side, but on the U F C, U F P side, should be some that will remain.
Well, they, the trunks may remain, but you're gonna be taking off half their roots. Right, it just is what it is.
Yeah, that's hard to quantify, obviously, when you don't have each tree, but I think there'll be some vegetation remaining there.
So, is there any possibility of bringing that sidewalk up more, cross, cross the road? Bring it up more into the center of, toward the church, and then cross at the half point back to your other side where you don't have that issue? Is the church at all interested, you think, in having a sidewalk that comes up to the front of their church?
No, because then they're, they're open to a liability issue as far as, I mean, we have, they have a non, we took as much to make that lot non-conforming. We could not take anymore for that.
No, I'm not talking about taking land, just building the sidewalk on their land, no.
There's a grade there now, there's a sidewalk grade there, and we're talking about a four-and-a-half degree sidewalk now, which is fairly, the grade on that side is much steeper.
Mm-hmm.
So you'd be, you'd be going, you'd be going up quite as steep. Um, and then you'd have to cross, people coming from town have to cross the road to get to that sidewalk, where this, they had just walked the side.
Yeah.
It creates another set of issues, you know, and there's ledge, potentially ledge there, 'cause we actually did the borings at the top of the hill. So we're knocking the top of the hill down. Um, in order to do that, we had to do some borings to check, so the soil conditions are pretty accurate, because those are based on borings.
And there's, there's no way to get some access point through the foam property with an easement of some sort?
Well, I mean, down the future, we're probably gonna try to talk about maybe moving the front of their, their little snow island a little bit for maybe a better sidewalk, my thought, so, and they've already donated a quarter acre to the town. I don't, I don't know what you're gonna ask more to do, I mean...
Well, it's just we're trying to find a way to make it work.
I know, I know, I know. My suggestion is we cut down the trees and we try to replant with, with some landscape architect, trying to get some trees with a, you know, as, as a, as a trade-off to try to get something else to grow, but, I mean...
Is there any way to get access into the back of this park, foot-wise?
There's no access across the ponds, the only access is from Lisa Lane, which now has a housing development.
Right.
And there's a ton of wetlands back there, so the conservation isn't gonna let us to get any access from that point.
Right. It's a tough site.
I mean, and we are, we are eleven percent below the standard grade, so we do have eleven percent of water to play with. I mean, if you didn't like sixty-one, you thought it'd be eighty-one, is that gonna still keep us under, you know, 'cause our, our water, I mean, you know what I'm saying? There's ninety-eight percent with the, you take with the regular, and the pervious is sixty-one, so, and you got eleven percent of a sidewalk area, theoretically, you might be at eighty percent, still meet your floodplain limits with the calculations, because your square foot area on the sidewalk is so much less than the driveway.
You, you, and then I, and then I've got, I wanted to say...
Just, um, Larry, when, when Concom does this, they don't use your review, they're gonna be going with, um...
B S C.
B S A.
B S C. So there is gonna be a level of, uh, almost, if you will, a third party, that, again, this review, these numbers...
But they won't, they won't, they won't be reviewing.
They won't, I doubt that they'll look at this, because that's not in their jurisdiction.
When I was on Concom, they assumed the whole site. But that was, maybe, maybe they don't do that.
It doesn't drain toward their jurisdiction, potentially.
Rob, I just have a couple of things. If the sidewalk were not to be put in, would you, or would it be less, or would it not require the same amount of grading with the trees? Because of the way you need to grade for the road? And, and I guess another way of putting it is, if, to grade for the road, you would still need to do that type of grading through the existing trees between the road and United Foam, would it be less if you took the sidewalk out? Is the sidewalk amplifying it, or do you think it would be the same?
There'd be a little less, obviously, because we'd be, you know, off that property line a little bit. I mean, the grades will be roughly the same as what they are now, we'd just be, you know, removing that five-foot swath of where we need to extend the grading out, I mean...
If, if the...
It'd be a little less.
If, if the, the sidewalk were to be put in as, as a turf strip, would any of the stormwater conversations going on be an issue?
Actually use the same number.
It's the same C N number.
Same number.
I, I'm just trying to clarify things, Harry, that's all, I'm, I'm, so, just in another approach, that's all.
Yeah, and, and we thought about that as well, but the only issue with that is that that's not an accessible surface.
Right, right.
So you'd want the sidewalk to be accessible.
'Cause I'm, I'm a little bit more in, this is just my opinion, uh, not as a voting board member. If the turf strip is there, it provides some access for, for people to, to walk on, you're right, it's not universal access. It, it's not gonna change the issue of the stormwater that's through here. Um, it may preserve some more trees. I tend to agree with, with the, the technical review engineer and the fact that the, the, the people using the sidewalk would be brought in by vehicular traffic, 'cause I can't picture the kids coming from Penbrook, um, of, of walking through there.
High school, they go up to the top field, down through Lenard Lane, down Pillsbury, up East Main Street, it's not that far from the high school top field.
From the high school? And for kids coming, uh, down Lisa Lane through this, I don't see them having a vehicular pedestrian conflict because of, there won't be any vehicles using the driveway, so that's just my opinion, so like... It, it was mentioned that there'll be kids coming down from Lisa Lane.
I don't know how many kids can, kids used to walk through the swamps in the old days, and those, those have been cut off, right?
Right, yeah.
Now you can, now they have the access of walking to the, to the dog park area and using that as a way to get to school, instead of walking all the way down Tenny, going towards, like where old Auburn Farms used to be, and cutting that way. Cuts, cuts their, their walking distance in half.
Um, I have another question.
One more, then I'm gonna go.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's just my general observations, and then you're gonna, you're gonna go to public as well.
Volpay Hill, um, road, for the, if you recall Little Hills Project, uh, we have a sidewalk that goes around the trees on Volpay Hill. It's, it's a winding thing, is it, is there a possibility this could be bad? No.
No, it's just that they're right there, Tilly, on there, they're right beside the road. There's a bit of a berm in some areas, it's flat, or a drop-off in others, but...
Nice try.
They're right on that, yeah.
Yeah.
There, so we've, we've been focusing on the sidewalk, um, and I think there are a lot of other, um, items that are still on the table that need answers also, or need to be finalized also. I don't, I don't think I've heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, the, the letter that, that Larry wrote, I don't think I've heard that there've been responses to those.
Yeah, they responded.
They responded, but, but, but they didn't answer what you were looking for.
They answered it.
They didn't satisfy.
They didn't satisfy.
They didn't satisfy, fair, okay, so I just wanna, so I just want...
Yeah, I, I would, yeah, just...
So, so I, I think, um, you know, this, with all due respect, this isn't micrograding of some subdivision. This is Route one thirty-three, and we have a responsibility to a lot bigger public than just the people who are gonna use this park. And the water issue is a really big issue. So when I hear conflicting information, and Larry's, when I hear Larry talk, he's talking, I think, quite specific as to where there's some disagreement in, in, in assumptions being made. And I think it is, I, I think to just look at the numbers and nothing but the numbers is, um, not taking into account how stormwater management works. There's a lot more to it than just the final numbers, and the assumptions that are made are a major part of it. So I, I think, you know, I think there are two groups, and, and there's, uh, some disagreement with that. On these trees, have you folks, so there was a no-cut area, and, and you guys started to look into that? Can you fill me in on the deal about that?
It's probably signed, or, or will be signed tomorrow. The legal has issued a two, a no-cut zone removal from the pastor, and he reviewed it with his church, and that was, um, in the process of being signed today with, um, town, town council. And there was also a second, a work, um, working in their, working in their parking lot, we, they gave him a plan of what they planned to disturb in the parking lot.
Yeah.
And the pastors reviewed that with the church, and is also in the process of signing that.
Right.
There's a third avenue that will be a small sliver of property possibly in United Foam that may need a sign-off. I don't know, depending on how...
There's a little bit of grading there, and they've given us the verbal that...
Right, so we'll, we'll get a letter over to them in the next day or two to get them to sign off on that as well.
And so the partial...
The temporary construction easement.
So my, so my understanding on the, um, partial release, uh, for that to be effective, it needs to be recorded.
Yeah.
So that would be, that would be for, that would be part of it. And then, um, I'm aware that the attorney, uh, town council, uh, is, is talking about, um, working on the abutting property and advising you guys to secure a license, which is what I think you're talking about. Okay, alright, so those are all things that we're gonna need to see.
Yeah.
And, so...
I'm just gonna go to Mike Farrell, then the selectman's going to sign it, and then you'll probably get a copy through the selectman, I would assume, or...
Please, please, please don't show up the day of the meeting with all this information. Please, please, please don't show up the day of the meeting with all this information. It is really hard.
No, we've been talking since the day after the meeting, how and I about securing.
No, 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 I mean, ju- just all of this.
This is mission.
It's all, it's really hard on Volteer Board.
Sure.
And, um, I think, you know, this is not something that I'm gonna allow on future, uh, projects. It's, it's just not fair and it's not the way to do business.
Mr. Chairman, uh, all, all those documents that we all know that we need and legally need anyway, that Town Council's very much aware that we need. If we were to approve this tonight and have a vote, we could, uh, certainly write that into the decision, but all of those must be in place before any building could occur.
Yeah, you de- you definitely could do that. The list for contingent approval would be so long, it would be a two, three-page document. I'd strongly recommend the board not do that. Um, with all this information being presented tonight, but, um, that's up to the board. I'm not a voting member and you guys are for this, on this project. But, so, uh, some of the other things was, uh, about his privacy, we talked about that. Um. I think there's still some more, uh, I think you got most of the drawing revisions. Do you still want that handicap parking space at twenty feet?
Oh, in the, no, that's supposed to come out. There was a detail in there that labels it at twenty feet, but it's supposed to go back.
So, that's just, that's just one example of, I looked at drawings just now and I caught it, and so I don't know what else is still on there that needs to be, so. I'm, I'm assuming there are other drawing notes and revisions that need to get addressed. Um. What's the plan on future lighting? Or any lighting?
There is no plan.
There's no plan, you guys have not. So that would be a note that, you know, would wanna make sure that if any lighting is gonna happen in there, that it would come back to the board for approval at some point in time. The, um, I, I think the idea of adding trees somehow, if these trees come out to what the planning board. Or what one member of the planning board's concerned about is when you drive along one thirty-three, what that road feels like when you're driving into the town, the town. And when all those trees are gone, you're just gonna see the building of the foam building and it's gonna be pretty ugly and. You know, it'd be nice to get some trees back in there to start to soften up that landscape again. Um, I think that would make a lot of sense for the, for the town.
Yeah, the church, I'm sure that they.
Yeah, they, they, they want that too, I'm sure. But, so they're, they're completely aware that they're all coming down, right?
Yeah, I mean, we've worked at the, we've, we've worked at the church for twenty years on their, and they have complaints, they let us know, we fix the problem. I mean, we played their land, you know, and I mean, we have soccer games back there for that reason.
And then, um, so there's, uh, in the deed, there's also, along with the no-cut comment, there's about maintaining the paved right-of-way and utility easement. As any other street road in the town of Georgetown, including timely snow removal.
That was to the top of the hill for the access to the church, for, for church service.
So, but the, the utility easement on the plan goes past that? Utility easement on the plan, on the deed that references this, on this plan, not your plan, but on the deed, maybe I, help, help clarify me. It just, it, the plan is, plan of land located in Georgetown, Mass. It's, it's this guy.
He drew it.
It's this one, Howard?
Yeah.
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 And if you, you'll see there's a note that says end of easement and then you'll see, and that's all the way up at the top of the. Do you see the end of easement note?
Yes, it says for the benefit of Laide.
Yeah, so, and then there's a big note that just points to the middle of that whole run, uh, that says proposed right-of-way and utility easement, twenty-eight thousand square feet.
Right.
So I'm assuming.
They could get so that the church, if it ever needed a utility easement.
Yeah.
Would have one.
Yeah.
We, in other words, that used to be their driveway, but now it's town of Georgetown land.
Yeah.
And they wanted to preserve their rights as a church to be able to pull utilities in.
Yeah, so all I'm saying is that all of that, according to the deed, needs to be maintained like any other town road in Georgetown. And I'm just reading from the deed. Um. Number three, the conveyance, so this is the quit plane deed?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so it's just something you guys need to look into and, um. And somehow address that in plans, because I think back up there, you're gonna, you have a, now you're gonna have a gate. And when, you know, the board allowed you guys to determine when you were gonna open it and not open it, which I think is a good call. But then if Peter's plowing it, he's also plowing. The utility easement portion, which is gravel, um, you know, maintenance issue starts getting kicked in. By the way, have you talked to, have you talked to Peter about this?
Yes, we've, we've emailed Peter multiple times. Do you wanna give us some area around or help me screw it out?
Well, not regarding the plowing, I haven't.
Just the, just the, the plowing issue of the gravel portion, I think.
He's been plowing all, he's been plowing since the town's ownership of it.
Yeah.
And the church has been happy with that.
Has he been plowing it up though, past the pavement?
Just up to the top of the hill so they can get into their driveway.
See, I think this goes further though.
Yeah, but the church has not been concerned with that.
Well, that's, that's fine.
But we should.
But then you've gotta take care of it legally. It's in the deed and you gotta, just like you do dealing with the no-cut issue.
The, the vehicle gate, would that need to be moved? Because we put that in that location at the request of the board.
Well, it was at the, yeah, it was at the request of the board. I think you need to take into account, uh, this piece, yeah.
You have to move the gate to the end of the utility easement?
I, I, I have a question.
I don't, I don't think so.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. The, the utility easement runs to the benefit of the church. When the New Life Community Church transferred this property to the town.
Mm-hmm.
And that means that essentially what that is for is if they needed to pull utilities into their property. That reserves, that, that preserves their right to do so.
Well, I, I'm not an attorney and you should probably read this. It's just, the, the conveyance is subject to the following restrictions and agreements.
Did that.
Okay.
That was, that was.
That was reviewed by legal. I don't, I can check the legalities of providing access to the easement, the utility easement or whether.
It's number three on the conveyances.
That preserves their right so that we could never say if they need to get utilities there and dig up, dig up that street.
This is about, this is about maintenance of in timely snow removal.
And snow removal.
Well, this is, that's what I'm talking about, snow removal. That has nothing to do with what you're talking about, snow removal.
Right, and we, we go all the way up and Peter goes all the way into their, into their driveway. And keeps that open for them.
But this is, but this is talking about maintenance like any other town road. And therefore, what that's talking about is, I think you understand what I'm talking about, where that end of the easement, utility easement is. Just verify that, please.
Yeah, I think you.
So it won't be.
It's, it's kind of a, a legal issue, I guess, with the deed. Do, is the town responsible, per the deed, to remove all the snow to that point? And is there a way if the, if we wanna have the gate where we've located it, because that's probably the logical place to put it.
Yeah.
If the church doesn't really need or, or care to have this sort of beyond that point, then you just need to. Maybe amend that somehow, I'm not really sure, but.
It would be the same way because the, the same way you have the license that, that the town council did and the same way the, um, limited restriction. You'd go through that same process again, is my understanding, but I'm not an attorney.
Yeah, I mean, it might be as simple as giving them the key to the gate.
I don't know, but.
They can exercise their easement rights if they need to. I mean, like I said, I'll look into it.
So that's, that, that was, that, that issue. Um. And they're asking you guys to secure a license from the Foam Plastics Corporation. You guys are doing that too?
Yeah.
All right, so those, those are, those are those.
Work, you're working about this, working this, it's a.
Can you, this is a, uh, uh, same church, different pew. When I look at the pond existing conditions, it looks like there's topography on the pond. Can you tell, what's that about? I'm just curious.
Do we have any, like, control lines going through the pond?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, what, maybe I'm reading, I'm probably reading the plan wrong.
Maybe not.
Nope.
It's tough to see, isn't it? It's through here. Right through there, so that's, those were existing contours from a previous survey that was done.
Right, so, yeah, we, yeah. Yeah, we obviously inherited the existing emissions plan in a lot of this, so we, we had to reuse most of what there was there for the existing emissions.
Can, can you help me understand then, when I asked, um, I think it was Bill, last time when he was here, and I asked him if. The property line had been confirmed and the topo had been confirmed and the answer was yes.
The property line has been confirmed because we've inserted that based on the deed reference information. And that's shown as such, and topo has been confirmed mostly up front. We sent our survey crew out to shoot the grades all along the front entrance way because there was some discrep, there's some discrepancies there.
Yeah.
And we shot a couple of spots back in, um, along the roadway to do some spot checking of what, um, the previous consultant had done. But Gail didn't do another, you know, complete site survey, so.
Okay, so when you saw those, those, the topography then where there's supposed to be a pond, um, does that raise any flags for you that the accuracy of the topo in there?
Well, I think that we, everyone's aware that the accuracy of this topo is, um. In some cases, especially within the pond, fairly general probably, because obviously Luke couldn't get in there to, to do the survey within the wetland areas there. And I don't know exactly how he. Inserted those contours within the pond, um, but if we were doing the survey. Yeah, we'd probably cut the contours off at the edge of water line or something like that.
Is there anything you can do next time that just to help? Help us feel more, help me feel more comfortable with the accuracy of the topo back there? And if that means, um, cleaning up that plan, uh, to get rid of that topo that's in the pond so that it truly is a pond and, and that, you know, when you're looking at that. You might wanna just do a couple of spot checks with some spot grades out there and some places that maybe you didn't. Oh, I know what would be helpful. Do you have that worksheet of where you took spot grades back out there that you can share with us?
We have our CAD file with the, the points and things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could show you that. It was, we kinda went down kinda over the hill.
Yeah.
It took a couple of spots there and it was, I think, within a foot or so, so we said, okay, this is, you know.
That's all I.
Good enough for what we're doing here.
For both, all of us, we want the same thing in the end. We just want the topo to be accurate back there, that's all. Okay, um. All right, so we've, uh, we've gone on for a while here. Um. It, this is up to the, to the board at this point. I, I, we have another public hearing coming up and, um.
Mr. Chairman, will you take your public comment?
Yeah, we will, um, but I, I wanted to, um, uh, ask the board, uh, you know, to think about. Uh, moving this to the next meeting, um, how they wanna handle this. But, so, public, please.
This is Wade, um, Georgetown resident. Uh, just a concern about this whole process. Obviously, we've been here for three years now presenting this project. And it seems like every time we walk away from a meeting, we address the issues, we come back, and now we have a whole new laundry list of issues and we feel like it's time to take a vote. We trust our engineers, we had a previous engineer, they came up with stormwater calculations, Tilly requested that, we got all that data for you. And the numbers are the numbers. And, uh, again, we can't keep walking away from these meetings with, again, ten, twenty more items. And the whole sidewalk issue, where was that mentioned? That should have been mentioned to John. They've been having conversations. Why is that such a big deal tonight? And if that is so concerning to you, Larry, that should have been addressed. And it just feels like we go on and on and on and the town spent enough money and it's time to take a vote on this project. And we can have contingencies, we'll get the easement from the church, we'll get the document from U F P if that's what you need, we can have those contingency items. And a few other minor details, but our engineers have addressed so many issues. We came in here ready tonight for, to hear this vote. To finally, after three years for building a park, not a real building or a structure, we would like to take a vote on this project with the contingencies.
Is there anyone else that wants to say anything in public? I think, uh, I, I, I can only imagine what it must be like to go with a project like this for three years. But, uh, I said it once before and I'll say it again, um, don't shoot the messenger. Um, we have a job to do, but more importantly, just one example, one classic example. All this information shows up tonight, tonight, and you're expecting the board to respond in the same night. That's unreasonable.
What, what information? I'm confused about that.
Do you wanna tell her all the information that you gave us tonight for the first time?
The letter that we went through when we first sat down here was addressing verbal issues that, uh, verbal comments that we received at the last hearing.
From the last year?
Yeah, how do you expect the board to respond? Do you expect them actually to respond the same night they get information?
Mr. Chairman.
Anyways, so.
It seems as though that it's been addressed. Uh, I, I haven't had a chance to really pore over it, but it's been pointed out. Again, uh, I would ask the board to look at this and recognize that this is a public project. That we've spent a good deal of public money for engineers. As well as the review of the engineers and the review and so on and so forth. I can tell you at this point, um, we've added a great deal to the project in terms of, um, safety, accessibility. And cost. I suspect, uh, the Concom will have their additions as well. They're gonna get this after us. I'd like to make a motion tonight to close the public hearing. I don't know if anybody agrees with me, but this is a town project. Basically, this is gonna be a softball field with grass, a little driveway that comes through. And, uh, that's already there. It's already there.
Ninety-seven car parking lot.
And a parking lot, yes, a parking lot. It's gravel, a gravel parking lot.
Ninety-seven cars, Harry.
Gravel parking lot.
So we have a motion.
I have, I, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Do I have a second? Okay, seeing no second, the motion fails. Uh, do we have a motion to carry this to the next? Meeting, uh, with you guys having enough time to, um. Get, uh, the remaining stuff in, I mean, all of these, uh, again, I mean, legal documents, it's up to you folks if you wanna. I would not recommend you approve a project without seeing some of these legal documents. Uh, in writing to a, to a certain place. Um, you can if you want, but, um, it's a dangerous thing to do for the town. And, and I think we all want the same thing, Harry. I think everybody wants this, where people, and I think that's the other thing that, that.
I'd just like to see this, uh, go to a vote, close the hearing, go to a vote, because I honestly don't believe this is gonna carry and I, I don't think it's right to put these people through it anymore. I don't believe this for, for affirmative votes here.
I think it's also, we're spending over a hundred and, we'll probably spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on engineering permitting out of a five hundred thousand, so. And it's been this three-year process. If this, if you, if this was to result in a no vote, we should probably do it now.
We're, we're gonna toss a hundred and twenty, let's do it very soon, not wait.
I mean, it's been four years, not three. We started in September of the year of, of two thousand and ten. And I agree, it's been a long process and there's been, there's been delays in both ways, but. We're now, and we're now at the very end, and I understand the legalities of it is, they've gotta be resolved and Mike Farrell is. He's working with the, you know, working with the town, Mike Farrell, to get all those legalities in.
So, why, why can't, you don't, well, you don't wanna, you don't wanna, you don't wanna wait till that last round of stuff comes in?
No, no, but is it, is it a situation just waiting for all these, the, all the legal stuff to come in, to be reviewed?
Well, I.
Should have a vote in chief.
That's a good question, because, excuse me, because I, I, what I heard tonight was, there was, has been no soil testing. Is that?
Oh, there has. There's been borings in that area.
Yeah, there's been.
No soil testing, I heard. I heard that he had, is not familiar with, with, uh, creating the sidewalk. And any other development. He's, he's still looking for that, your engineer.
No, the five-degree grade is recommended by D P W, so they're at a four-point-five degree grade, so they went with it's an acceptable grade for that type of sidewalk. And, and he's, and the, the stipulation is that, I mean, that's the recommendation of D P W.
There's fifteen, there's fifteen test boring sheets that were done up on the site.
Near, we're, we're talking right in the road.
At the top of the hill. We wrote the whole site. We wrote the whole site and we've submitted these, uh, months ago with the stormwater report.
But, right, um, you know, let's key in on the big issue connecting to the road, 133, that area. What soils testing have you done for the drainage?
At the top of the hill, we had to cut the hill down. So, at the top of the hill, all in that area, there was testing, spitting, boring stuff. So, it's within twenty feet of the sidewalk.
I, I, I mean, so there was a motion and it didn't carry. Um, I suspect if, I, I would think that if you want a vote taken, you know, this badly, which I'd recommend against it right now, but that, go to the next meeting. And I, I can't speak for these members, but, um, you know, I would, I would suspect that they would, they would vote. But that will give you time.
Right.
That will give you time at least to do things like, show us, show us this porous pavement works. Just show us.
Let's make a commitment that we get a vote the next meeting, one way or the other. Because I'll be retiring, I would retire two years ago, but I'm, I'm wanting this project to go through.
Hang it on. Oh, I think you've done a lot of work, Jimmy. You've really...
I just, I just want to...
All right, and we're going to, we'll wrap this up.
In, in, in defense of the planning board, I just want to note that the public hearing notice for this project, the first public hearing was October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve. So, we've heard three years, we've heard four years. We're, we're still under two years.
Really?
Nine, twelve, twelve is when it first came into the planning office for this formal review.
Are we patting ourselves on the back that it's only been...
No, I, I'm...
No, no.
Not patting.
Thank you.
No, but I think that clarification is kind of important.
Right, I'm sorry, and I, the bills, I, I bent off the bills. Our bill started in five, five, one, five-one, two thousand and ten.
You're going to work around for that, the amount of time we've been working on.
Sorry, so I was basing it on the...
Serious amount of...
Okay, what I would get, what I would really... This is going to be, we'll wrap it up.
What I would really like to see is a punch list that is exclusive.
Thank you.
So that they know exactly what their marching orders are, so we know what we're going to look for.
Couldn't agree more, couldn't agree more.
So, what do we want?
After the last meeting, we had a punch list, which they addressed. So, if we're going to vote on the next, the next time, the next round, then we have to have an exact punch list again. We can get, we can make a contingent on these easements. We'll have them signed before the next meeting. But, but we had a punch list last time and we resolved it. We addressed all the issues. This is differing of engineer opinions. That's what we're cost, that's what we're charging the town to hear differing engineering opinions. And we've gone through two engineers now. So, we did have a punch list, we addressed all the issues. Now, we have another punch list, but that's it, that's it. We'll, we'll get through it, we'll get the easement docs, and then this project just goes along.
Does the board want to make that commitment? That assuming we get this information, um, how do, assuming we get the information a week in advance of our meeting, that we'll take a vote? You guys comfortable with doing that?
Do you want a straw vote or...
Straw vote, yeah, just...
I'm good with that.
I'm good with it.
I don't think there's all that much more information to remain.
So, then, then the question is...
We've never made a habit of doing that and, and we want all the information in. Otherwise, you're, you're open to somebody saying, you didn't give us enough information, so I'm going to turn it down. We don't want to get in that box.
What would you recommend, Howard, as the best way to create this final list that we can all agree on?
The, the board to agree what, what their final list of, of outstanding items are, because a couple have crept up at this meeting that weren't part of conversations in the past, as far as I'm concerned. So far, I understand it that the board's requesting the applicant to provide in, in, um, a timely manner for their review. And I'm assuming before that you're going to continue to the meeting on the night. The outstanding items are, um, the, the, the legal documents that are being requested of the church, uh, of the two of butters, rather, um, to, to see that they've been recorded. And that's it. All the other things are cited.
I think that's their response to Larry's, um, Larry's letter.
They did.
I, I... I get, but, but the board hasn't seen it, that's all. It was vetted out tonight. So, I think if the applicant formalizes the discussion, besides our minutes, what the response is to Larry's, then the board will be able to say, for final, this is what the applicant's saying and this is what the engineer is saying. And that's when it comes into the purview, uh, purview of the board to say, we agree or disagree.
We also have your chili easement that we have to get legal on.
Right.
Do you want to wait till, like, two more meetings?
And, and...
Are you going to be able to get all those?
When's the next hearing?
The ninth of July.
Twenty-ninth.
Coming up fast.
Get things recorded and everything?
No.
Fourth coming up?
I got it this, correct.
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
And, and the board can correct me, that's what I believe are the outstanding items.
The, the other, the other outs, the other outstanding item, though, is, um, is this porous pavement issue where we have two different technical opinions. And...
That's going to get resolved.
The, the board's going to have to resolve it, they're either going to have to...
Okay, well, 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 here's, here's, let me, let me try this. Um, what about, if, if town council says, planning board, you have done right for the town. You have gathered two sides, you've done the best job, you have, you've protected yourself. You can approve this project as is with this issue of stormwater. What Larry's saying, going off the property, what they're saying won't happen. If the town council says that, which that's our job to protect the town, I'm fine with that. Then, 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 then I don't care to a degree if they can find examples of this porous pavement on a five percent sidewalk slope working, which they won't find.
That would be tough to find.
I don't think...
I, I don't know where you're going to get town coun, a lawyer to sign off on engineering.
Oh, no, 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 that's...
I'm mixed up here.
No, no, this, this would just be, in, in the same way that town council has advised on those deed issues of the no-cut zone and of the, uh, getting a license to do work on the foam's property.
Say if they may, if these calculations be DP, DPW specs, then the...
DEP stormwater management.
Doesn't, then the town is under no additional liability?
No, no, what I, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm after...
That's the question.
What I'm, what I'm after is, let's not...
No, 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 I'm, I'm...
What I'm, what I'm after is getting a letter from town council, which, which just says, um, they're not, they're not ruling one way or the other on whose engineering is right. That's not their purview. Uh, what, what I'm saying is that we have done our job in notifying the abutter, foam, whatever. We have done everything we should do.
Yeah.
That he is now aware, and I know he was, he sat here.
Yeah.
Um, but he wouldn't put anything in writing to that.
Right.
Okay, I appreciate that. If we, if that's fine with town council...
Right, if the town is not going to be...
If the town is...
And, to add to that, that, that may happen. If, if that's the desire of the board, then, then it may be the fact that it, it's the way the decision's written. And town council can say, this decision protects the board, something like that.
Give us an example. An example, they'll give us...
You'd have, you'd have to give them, the legal counsel, you'd have to work with them to come up with the wording for the decision.
Right, they'd vet it and suggest wording.
Yeah, so that's going to take you at least four weeks to go...
Well, that would come after vote in, in public hearing.
Don't start reckoning until we vote.
That, for, for, for me, my biggest concern has been, you know, this, that, that issue. And if that, if we're, if we've protected the town in that regard with the abutter, then, then whatever I think of the project is, is irrelevant. You know, that's my issue.
I have, I have another question. I was thinking all along, surely, now you have an engineer that says that, that their calculation is okay, there's not going to be a problem. Do we have that in writing from the engineer that you hired, Gail? Do we have that confirmed in writing, what you were saying verbally? And I would like to see that in...
Well, I think what happens is they're putting their stamp and signature to a stormwater calculations in their drawings.
I understand that, but that's what I'm looking for, surely, for the town.
Their stamp is saying that.
They, they, they have and they will in what they say. And then the letter that they write in response and the report that they put together, it's all, that's their professional service. That's their document. There's nothing more they can do than that.
We'll give you our opinion that we've met all the stormwater standards that are standard practice and our, you know, professional judgment that what we've done is, um, you know, per engineering standard and...
Yeah.
But to guarantee that, you know, nothing would ever happen, you're talking about catastrophic storm events and things like that, it's just, well, we can't guarantee anything.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue this to, um, July twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen.
A second.
Your motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Action list, we just got to confirm with Howard for the action list, okay?
Yeah, I, I, the, I spoke and the board spoke during the meeting, so...
Yeah, they have time. If I have any questions, I, I got three items, but it might be more, so I'll send it to you. And if you have any additional, just throw them on.
Okay.
Okay, you know, so...
Why didn't you discuss that with the board?
No, no, we talked about the action items.
Oh, okay, yes.
I'm going to say, I'm going to, if you have any, I just want to make sure that we're, that's all. I'll email tomorrow.
Okay.
He's the contact, he usually is.
One other question. What's going on with the sidewalk? Is Peter prepared to make a move?
Public hearing's closed. Public hearing's closed.
Yeah. Sorry.
Get an update from him. I mean, you should ask him during the... He has an update for that. I, I did get, I did get a notice that Peter...
I, I didn't think he submitted a...
Relatively positive.
All right. Yeah, Harry, Harry did.
He made the motion.
When Harry was...
Did we? Sure, the motion's...
Yeah, that's why they were beefing.
Don't. When you make him, I wish he voted.
The section that says that reservoir...
I seconded it, and then what happened? The board, does it have to follow through with the board vote?
The board already voted.
You did.
Did you, did you not vote?
No, I, I think that, I think that you did vote. But what my question to you is, is are you an abstention for this?
I'm an abstention.
Okay, that's, and you didn't say that, so I would...
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. So, I would fall to, there are one abstentions. It's over there, I knew she was going to come after.
That's all.
She did, you...
It's not easy, it's all right. So, I guess we're...
While, um, are you ready to just talk right now, Joe? Do you need a minute or two to set up or...
Yeah, what, Harry's coming. What, what?
I was just saying, while, while we're waiting for them to set up, you could quickly take care of, um, one item under new business. And that's, uh, the planning board member appointments, other boards or commissions. There's only one. And that is, um, appointment of planning board member to the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission as an alternate. I'm currently the planning board's commissioner. And Bob Watts is currently serving as the alternate. So, we just need to...
Motion to, motion to appoint Bob Watts as the Merrimack Valley Planning Commissioner alternate for the two thousand, appointment to expire.
It's a one-year.
Uh, one year from... Valid without a date.
June thirty-first.
Appointment to expire, June thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
A second.
Your motion, the second, any discussion?
It, it's a roll call vote, sorry.
Roll call.
Um, Tilly?
Yes.
Tim? Bob?
Yeah.
Rob Hoover?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Well, that's three, so...
We'll have to take a break.
Watts and Bob.
I didn't hear Bob. Are you dead, he said, yes?
Larry, Larry?
And, and Tim will have to abstain because he didn't hear it.
Ask them to five, five-minute recess. Three-minute, three-minute recess.
Movie guy?
Yeah, yeah. It's another break. Two-minute recess.
We're going to take a little short break?
Two-minute recess.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Literally, two minutes.
I could make that happen right now, look, you don't have to worry.
Two minutes, I got my watch going. I only did it because everyone was getting up. Sorry. Sorry.
The policeman will have the power to arrest him.
Okay, we're on. Welcome back to the Wednesday, June twenty fifth Georgetown Planning Board meeting. Public hearing number two, definitive subdivision plan turning leaf continued from June eleventh. Howard, did you wanna make any introduction, otherwise we just wanna go right.
No, um, we, we haven't received any additional information from the applicant, but what is provided in the supplemental packet tonight is gonna be relevant to the conversation later on, it's the copy of the inclusionary housing balance bylaw. So everybody will have some reference to the wording and text of it.
Do you guys wanna present something? And then we'll.
Sure, for the purposes of public meeting, Jill Manon, on behalf of the applicant turning the LLC. Here with me is Rich Williams, the site design engineer. At the last hearing, we had some residual questions relative to the plan, and, and in particular, the planting, um, sections of the plan. And I think Rich is prepared to just go through them quickly, and then I believe that the final issue that had been referenced by Mr. Snyder was actually the inclusionary bylaw and the results of our discussions with the task force, which I'll go over in more detail, but I thought maybe let's finish with the plan, and then if you have additional questions or comments, then we can proceed with that, if that's okay? Right, Richie?
Right, so, uh, the, the outstanding issues are, are notes that are gonna go on the plan and, um, changes to the, to the, uh, details for the, well, the detail for the street tree. So I do need to apologize, because, um, at the last meeting, I said the sugar maple was on the list of plants, um, and it was not.
Wow.
So I have, I have two, uh, trees, and, and, uh, my first choice would be the, uh, green vase zelkova, and so I'm looking for a little, uh, yea or nay from, uh, from Mr. Hoover.
That tree is fine with me, but just understand, I, it's not about me picking the trees, the only reason I said the sugar maple, no, was because it was not a good choice as far as surviving.
Right.
That's the only reason.
And I just, I just wanna make sure that I don't pick another one that.
No, as far as I'm aware, that tree's fine.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna replace the, um, sugar maple with a green vase zelkova, and, and that will be on the, on the final plan. We're gonna add the note saying that the main leader, uh, won't be cut when they prune the, prune the tree. We're, um, gonna take the small, the, the notation off in front of the woods road that had, there was two lines that noted curbing, we're gonna make that one line. And, um, where the grass plot, uh, is narrowed less than a foot, we're gonna cut it off, so it's part of the sidewalk.
Correct.
And then, uh, I'm gonna put a note regarding, uh, the, the work and, uh, of putting the tree in the ground in poorly drained soils. Uh, we'll note that it's gonna be opened up a little more and, and, uh, uh, include some, uh, some better draining soils, loam, sandy loam, put in the bottom of the, uh, of the well. But I will point out that we've done, uh, many, many test holes out there, and the, and the material that's there, um, should be adequate to, to plant trees. I mean, really, the only issue would be if we were, we were in ledge, and, and all of those places are gonna be removed, and then, uh, new material brought in, so I, I don't think we'll have an issue there.
Well, are there trees there now?
Many trees. That's it.
That was it.
There's not necessarily a connection between the two.
Okay. So that takes care of that list, and those, that, those drawings would get disseminated later?
I would plan on putting it on the final drawings.
They'll be submitted in advance, just to, to.
Oh.
I, what I didn't wanna do is, is create another twenty set submittal with twenty sheets. I mean, it ends up being a lot for, um, for.
The production cost.
Sure.
Yeah, on, on smaller.
On some of that, but we, obviously, we have the list, and we, we'll submit it ahead of time, so that it can be verified and proved out that we had done that.
The final submission.
Right. Exactly.
You'd have to cut down a couple of those trees.
Did you, um, did you, uh, wanna talk about the affordable housing part?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Uh, well, Jill can, I, the only thing I can, uh, premise is the fact that, uh, I was at the, the same meetings as the applicant at both the trust and the task force, which occurred last Wednesday and Thursday. So, uh, it, it was, uh, codified in an email I sent out to the board, 'cause the board had requested some type of written documentation, but, but there, there's been conversation that has occurred since that email, which will be germane to tonight's conversation, so it, it's.
Between whom, Howard, I'm sorry?
Uh, between, uh, the, uh, legal counsel for the applicant and the town planner. And it, it occurred today, and it will be fully discussed tonight, so.
Okay, please.
So basically, we did appear, as, as was, um, a request of the board, to try and get a agreement and a consensus between the task force as well as the trust. And when we had appeared, we had discussed doing payment in lieu versus an onsite, um, construction of two units. Basically, there would be the equivalent of, um, an average of what the housing was within the, um, body of the, um, subdivision, i.e. two homes, and then a fractional payment of point two. So we also had discussed doing a payment in lieu, the practical reason was because we thought that we could better provide for a response to your master, um, housing plan. As a result of those discussions, the task force thought that it would in fact be a good idea. Now, what is left to decide is how in fact the decision would be, would reflect that, that payment. How the bylaw works is, um, basically, a little confusing in its writing. Um, you know, when it refers to units, it really, i- it was done, probably it was taken, and it would've been good spirit and well, you know, well intentioned, probably it was taken from, um, an OSRD that entailed the construction of multi-unit facilities, like, and that's why there's all these constant references to units. Um, just so that everybody, I think, understands why maybe there's that reference. Um, so it says essentially that if you are going to do an off-site or, or a payment in lieu, the way you do that is you look at the average sales, and then you pay a formula based on average sales times the, um, the number of units that you're required to provide. Well, the formula basically then means that you look at the sale price every time you sell, every time we deliver a deed, you look at that, you multiply it essentially by six percent, and you give that to the town, that's how it really works, it boils down to it. Oh, that's how it works.
Let's just, let's.
Okay.
I'm confused.
Let's, let's do, finish what you're saying, and then we'll.
Of course, of course. So it, it, I'd love it to be four percent. Um, it's, it's, you know, the board, and we've gone over this with the board, and, um, essentially, it is six percent. So what you do is every time you sell, that's what you look at is the price. If you look under, yeah, you look under, there's, I, I'll address that, and do you want me to address it now?
No, I'd like you to finish what you're gonna do, and then we're gonna go individual.
All right, so essentially, what you do is you multiply each sale, so we have to provide for, um, basically, a full payment on twenty units. We, we're selling twenty-two. So you do your first ten sales, and you multiply every one of those sales times point six, and you'll deliver to the town that payment. Now, when you hit your eleventh unit, that unit is what I would consider to be a fractional, and what the task force had asked us to do is deliver the fractional payment at the eleventh sale. So basically, as you sell, so you, you're coming through. So when you do your eleventh sale, the way it works is you don't base it that, now it's times four percent. So when you're doing your fractionals, now you take the average price, so you take the sales of one through eleven, not one through to, one through eleven, you multiply it times four, and you have your number. Now you go through, and you sell your next ten homes, say, or lots, whatever you may sell, and then you multiply that by six, point six each time, well, I'm sorry, six percent. I do the math in my head, right? Times, um, six percent, and then when you hit your twenty-second lot, you do an average of lot sales, and then you pay that, that's how it works.
Can you point out where it says ten, every ten, because?
That's what the task force asked us to do.
Oh, that's what they asked, but that's not in your bylaw.
No, what you could, your bylaws, honestly, Mrs. Evangelist, it, it isn't very clear how you would do that. So what they asked us to do was to do it in increments of half and half, so if you, if you, there's no way to really interpret how else to pay it. I mean, I suppose we could argue that we should be paying that at the very end, but, mister, I'm sorry, Rich, mister O'Connell basically agreed to, I'm hitting him. Mister O'Connell basically agreed to do it on the eleventh sale and on the twenty-second sale.
And, and if I can add to that, 'cause I was part of the, the two conversations, what, what is being discussed is, in, in the formula, it's referred to as the AMSP. Is the average market sales price, and we're talking about the fractional payment. And it was agreed that to determine the average market sales price, you would look at the, the, the previous eleven sales. And the reason why we're picking out eleven is 'cause it's a twenty-two lot subdivision. So we'll, we'll, we'll go through eleven units, we're at the halfway point, now we're gonna require that, uh, the fractional payment be made. And then after the sale of the next eleven, we're gonna require the second fractional payment to be made. Now, it's not written into the bylaw that way, but there is written into the bylaw the ability for the planning board to condition how these payments are gonna be made, and so the task force, the trust, and the applicant considered this is the best way to determine the average market sales price.
So what we were trying to do today, what, what I was trying to do with Howard was trying to figure out what the best presentation would be to the board with regard to how to determine that, because based on your formula, it always asks for average price, well, you can't have an average price when you sold one thing. Right, so it's, it's not the average, it's the real. So that's why I was like, how, how are we supposed to really do this? And, and, and Tom said, look, it, you know, you, you would just take the price of each sale, and that's how we're gonna do it, based on six percent, six percent, six percent.
Now, this is different than what the board has done, as I understand it, with previous subdivisions. And as I understand, what the board's done with previous, previous subdivisions has been always unique to that subdivision. For instance, Harris Way, this, this developer that got the permit is the same one that's been developing the lots, and he's still selling the lots. Right? And the, the planning board negotiated, every time you sell one of those units, you're gonna give us disagreed upon percentage, which, which happened to be four percent. In the instance of Turning Leaf, uh, it's, it's much bigger than nine lots, and there, there's, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but there may be differences in developers selling off a lot versus constructing and selling a home directly, like has happened on Harris Way. Little's Hill is an instance of that, Little's Hill, they sold, um, the last few lots to developers who then developed and, and built the home, and then when that home was sold to the first homeowner, we received a negotiated.
Two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars?
Right, so.
It was a giveaway.
So, so, uh, in those two instances is what could happen on, on Turning Leaf, where the developer sells the lot, or the developer sells the, the, the unit, and so those prices are gonna be different.
We do anticipate selling, I mean, it's possible, our, you know, our, we already have two purchase and sale agreements in place, um, to do homes on the lots, we do. Um, we have, and we anticipate selling some lots to homeowners, we always do, it's the way sometimes you have to jumpstart your project, you don't have a choice. Not to mention, we have absorption covenants that we have to satisfy with the bank, and if we have to satisfy them, and we can't sell a pre-done home in enough time to satisfy that quarterly absorption, we sell lots, we do, so, um.
Okay.
So, uh, could, could I get a clarification?
You wanna start, go ahead, Harry.
I, I'd just like to be clarified on that, so in other words, we would, and, and I'm more directing this towards, towards Howard, 'cause he's right in the decision. Essentially, the way it would work is that those numbers would come up after you've made the sales, or someone else made the sale of the home.
No, come up when we make the sales.
Right.
What if you dump lots?
We, what do you mean by dump lots?
What if you, what if you just took your first ten lots and just sold lots?
We, we, we may have to.
Okay.
I mean, we, that's the point, that's why we need to be able to, we, 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 we may, we're going, we absolutely a hundred percent are gonna sell some lots to homeowners.
Sure, sure.
A hundred percent.
So would that be the average price?
No, that would be a price, and that's what, what one of the six percents would be based on, but the average at the end of the day would be higher. Like, we'd sell a lot, absolutely, we'd sell maybe two lots, you know, maybe we sell three lots, maybe we sell no lots in the first period of time, first ten sales. It would be whatever the market demands.
So the six, as you're saying, six percent would come from the price of lot?
Absolutely, it was what we yielded from.
Plus the house.
No, it would not, because we would have no connection to the home, none.
What I wanna, what I wanna try, what I wanna try to do, just so we stay linear.
Can I just continue on that line of thought?
Yep, yep.
And, um. What would prevent you from selling your first ten lots for a dollar each?
Because we can't, our bank would, 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 would actually, we'd violate all of our covenants, we can't, we can't get a release, we can't get a release on our bank that has a mortgage on our lots by paying a dollar. We can't make money by paying a dollar. The intent of your bylaw is to avoid any kind of fraud, I get that, that, that would be tantamount to fraud to sell for a dollar.
That would be fraudulent?
Of course, absolutely.
And it'd be violation of something that's written in the bylaw, too.
But if, if my client said, Jill, I need.
We'll come around.
I need to. I need, oh, we absolutely have a minimum. Well, but, well, you know what, if we set a minimum, then we're gonna set a maximum, so I just say to you that, you know, if we're protecting a low, we're protecting a high. But at the same time, you know, market-driven pricing, so, you know, we have, right now, can I tell them what our target is? Um, right now, we have a target of a potential lot sale of two fifty and a home sale of six fifty, no, six twenty-five, six, I apologize. So it's two fifty and six twenty-five, those are our targets, you'll see them, you'll be able to check, and you'll look, and you'll see. But if two thousand eight happens again, I can assure you that none of that will come through, and we won't be able to sell, but we have no choice but to preserve our capital and to satisfy the interests of the bank, so we could sell it less.
In the interest of coming up with different things, you referenced Harris Way, uh, Harris Way.
Oh, oh, one of your, oh, one of your, okay, I thought it was on our project.
There was a minimum, and each, if the lot was sold as a lot, it was still considered that the, uh, average price was five fifty. That was built into the agreement.
And, and there could be, if, if you.
Is this the one you?
Come up at, at the meeting with what you expect the average market price to be, then if they sell a lot, you're getting more, but if they sell a lot with a house that's higher, you're getting that fixed.
Howard, can you clarify for me what the goal of the board is tonight on this particular issue?
The, the, the goal of the board is to, um, listen to the applicant and understanding the decisions made by the trust and task force.
Right.
And, and which we're doing, and at the end of the conversation, um, be able to have what's required of the planning board, and that is how this bylaw is gonna be met, and part of that is hammering out what these numbers are. We've got the policy, I think we've got the timeline, now, through the discussion, is the numbers. And w- once that's set, then, uh, you, I believe that we can easily write that into what the decision's gonna be.
May I ask one question, is Harris Way the one where you had four percent?
Yes.
Okay, so I understand why you would set a minimum of that, I mean, you're actually adjusting also the, the percentage, so you're, you know, that's a, that's a huge difference.
And, and there was discussion, too, about, given the, the construction timeline, Harris Way's nine lots, they're all custom homes, this is twenty-two lots, that you could condition the decision that the planning board issues about the bylaw, as saying, at, when you issued that fractional payment after eleven lots have been sold, you could revisit everything, because the market might be going up, and the market might be going down, so.
Revisit in what way, I'm sorry?
And revisit what the decision was, of what you're gonna accept for the applicant meeting the bylaw, because this is gonna be a long extension of time.
Yeah, I don't think.
Is that kinda like a moving target thing?
Yeah, you can't, it would be an unforceable condition.
I'm just bringing it up as, as what the planning board considers in terms of flexibility, if you want to make an absolute now of what could happen for the next twenty-two lots, then that's what's expected.
Isn't that, yeah, what we usually do when we make a decision.
Right, yeah.
And that way, the board knows the expectation and, and.
Everybody has a reasonable expectation of what the condition, I mean, I understand what you're trying to get at, I mean, again, we're not, the, if we were looking to create an average price, and that was what we were going to pay on every time, I would agree with Mr. Snyder's comment, but we're saying, we'll pay on actual, so we're telling you that when we sell high, we'll pay it, when we sell low, we'll pay it. Um, we're hoping to always sell high, by the way, because that's in our best interest, it is not in our best interest to sell lots for a discount. It, it, it is not, it doesn't do us any good, but we do not want our hands tied when it comes to the financial decisions of how we have to sell and/or develop this property in order to be financially sound. And, and to the, pardon me, go ahead.
So what, what, uh, my brain's starting to slow down. So what, what is your proposal then?
Our proposal is that if, if this board is to consider the payment in lieu, then our suggestion is that we pay as each lot is sold, um, and lot home, whatever it may be, when we sell a piece of property, whether it's improved or not, that we pay six percent on that purchase price to this town. Um, and then at the eleventh lot, we average the prices, prices having been paid for the prior, oh, well, the prior ten and the eleventh sold, and we pay four percent on that pursuant to section, um, F. Is that written down?
'Cause that's the fractional payment.
Yeah, it's, it is, it's the fractional payment.
Yep, please.
You were present at this, these, both these meetings.
Right.
And they understood that the developer only wants to pay the required amount, whatever it is, when they sell the lots, not that when they sell the homes. There's nothing, in other words, did they talk about that with the two committees? Because that, the notes that you sent said house, 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 didn't say lots.
If we sell a home, if, I, I under, can I, the point of clarification, because I think that Mrs. Evangelista is just, I didn't explain myself properly to you.
Okay.
When the developer sells anything, if the developer is involved in the sale of a home or a lot, whenever that is, the full price paid to the developer will be, will yield a six percent payment to this town. So, if the developer, however, sells a lot to a third party, not, it's not developing it. The developer is not the party constructing, then that original price paid would be the six percent. There isn't a second bite at an apple, because the developer is not the party building.
Is there difficulty in selling a lot in, in being able to sell it with the, the, the third party and, and being the developer, being able to then go ahead and sell it, knowing he has to pay that six percent?
Wouldn't happen. We wouldn't be able to sell them.
You wouldn't be able to sell a lot to a developer with saying, in the future, you're gonna have to pay six percent to the town?
I mean, if, if, you know, no, we would never be able to do it.
There's nothing in the bylaw that says anything about lots.
It doesn't, I have to, I have to disagree, Mrs. Evangelista. There's absolutely nothing that doesn't say there aren't.
All right, I was involved. All right, let me, I'll give you a shot.
It's very unclear.
I, I think a couple of us were involved with, with amending this bylaw. And I, and I know specifically the last amendment, excuse me. We want, I think Nick was involved with it at the time, the previous planner.
Nick, crack now.
Yep. Yeah, crack now. And, uh, the, the whole goal of amending that was because the town had gotten burnt from people buying off-site, and it never came through. And then there was one on a development that didn't come through, and then there was another mess-up. So, the whole intent of this is, first of all, develop the units on the development. That's what we pushed. And then we gave, uh, Leifway for the money, and that was the goal. But to sell lots was never intended anywhere.
We would rather put the home, we would rather develop the onsite units than have the board control our ability to market this property, because you would bind us in a way that would be fiscally irresponsible. We cannot agree to that, because we cannot guarantee you that we do not have to sell lots to a homeowner. I'm gonna give you an example. Um, and I do this, I represent a lot of developers, I do a lot of sales. Almost every single solitary developer I work for will sell lots in the beginning to homeowners, individuals who will build the homes for themselves. How do you tax those homeowners? It's, you can't, the purpose of the bylaw is not to do that. In my opinion, the reason why you're charging or requiring a six percent payment, which is, is fairly large, actually very large, given there's no density bonus, there's no relief given for providing these inclusionary homes, is to ensure that there is an adequate payment and so that you can make sure that the payments are satisfactory and not, nobody's trying to undermine you. Um, if this entire project were to sell and they were individual lots and they went to individuals who built their own homes, God bless them. They wanna go out and they wanna GC the project themselves. The town really, what do you do? Go into a residence pot, it's a very difficult thing to do. And, and to try and control a developer's ability to manage his own property is also very difficult.
Well, I, I sympathize with, with what you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying if I was in your shoes. We're in the town's shoes. We've got pressure on forty B, which the state is shoving down all the communities in Massachusetts. This, we, when we have a forty B in town, we increase our population to, to something like three, four, five hundred people. Plus, at the last, uh, production plan, I think it said thirty-nine children were from that one development for forty B. It impacts the town. It impacts our tax rate. It impacts, we're building a new school because we were crowded. Uh, we have several issues. We have more police calls with forty B. It is a burden on the communities. Furthermore, it's, you're developing association that pushed this forty B. So, if you're gonna protest, you should be working along those lines.
We're not protesting anything. In fact, we, when we went to the trust and task force, I not only offered to come back and help provide and discover homes, but I volunteered my time and said to them, look, I'll help you. I'll, I'll, I'll donate my legal time. I'll come in and I'll do meetings with your trust and your task force. I won't charge anyone, and I'll come in and I'll help you and I'll identify lots for you and I'll help you with your zoning. In addition to that, Mr. O'Connell said, you know what? I also will help you with your development. I'll help you evaluate and identify properties, and we'll do that. Um, you know, we're not a fly-by-night developer or attorney. We're not looking to come in and exploit your town. We're, no, but my point is, we understand the demands of forty B. I shouldn't even say that. I apologize, cause that's not fair. We understand the needs to provide affordable housing to people. We understand it. We understand the demands and the pressures that a comprehensive permit can place on this community. You're not in a position right now for forty B and you aren't going to be. Um, however, I do know why you wanna provide units. And we've actually offered to donate our time to help you do that in a proper and efficient manner that will ensure units in perpetuity. And I, Howard can testify to that before the trust and the task force.
I, I just wanna add to that, right, right on that point. The, when the trust and the task force were listening to the, in lieu of payment, um, it, it was offered up that the applicant's attorney and the developer would be in on a quarterly basis meeting with both the task force and the trust to help evaluate what lands been up for sale and where they may be able to develop it. And if something popped up, then they would be able to, to act on it with the developer, um, and the, the, the funds in the trust. The, the other aspect that the trust and task force considered that to be beneficial is the fact that to meet the goals of the housing production plan is more the creation of rental units as opposed to single-family.
But did you, did you come to my, answer my question? Did they understand what she's saying about when they sell lots? That's where the six percent is gonna come from? Not selling it to a developer to build a house? And then they're free and clear?
We will sell a combination. We have no intention of selling all the lots. It will be a combination, maybe. Maybe we sell all the homes.
I wish I, they could hear that discussion.
The selling of lots were not discussed at, at the meeting, to answer your question.
No, they were not.
That's what I, I gathered that from the notes.
Cause it was, it was more considering of, of, of policy and understanding what the fractional number would be.
Sure.
That's all.
If I may, Mr. Chin, I have just a question, Howard.
Yeah.
Just to, I wasn't there. Both the task force and the trust are happy with that agreement, that, that list of, of criteria that you sent out? They're good with that?
What I sent out in the email is what they.
They voted on it, actually?
Well, the, the, the trust took, uh, and I'm still preparing the meeting, meeting minutes, and so, um.
Excuse me for interrupting. Excuse me for interrupting. Does Larry need to be here?
No. Uh, not that I know.
Be happy to leave.
I'll read the minutes.
Sorry, Larry. I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
You can watch it on demand, I'm sure.
Do, do.
Totally gonna charge you half.
Six percent.
We'll negotiate to four.
Uh, I can get you the exact wording of the, the motions, but the trust took a vote and they unanimously approved to work with the developer in, in accepting then in lieu of payments to further the goals of the housing production plan.
I think what I, I asked the question inappropriately. Is what you have at your fingertips right now something that you could plug into a decision? And is it something that you folks are in agreement with? Maybe that's the question I meant to ask.
Uh, yes.
Yes. And that's what the task force, the trust, and you folks are all in agreement on.
I would say there's general consensus, to, to, to Tilly's point. The discussion of, of units and, and, and built homes.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, lots.
Right, right.
It, it was, it was never discussed at the meeting if a unit could be considered as a, a lot or a home, and it was never discussed if.
Right. I, I think you need to have that discussion.
Yeah.
Right.
Speaking for myself.
I wouldn't second guess them. I, I, I wouldn't second guess the task force. Between the task force and the trust, I think you have a, a, a good set of minds that are fully aware of what they're doing and have a much better grasp on affordable housing than I ever will. And I, I would just take, if they're in agreement to what you folks decided, I'm good with that.
Okay. And, and would you wanna hear that, um, before you close the public hearing, or would you be able to accept it as, as that input? Cause the trust, July fourth is coming up, but beyond the holidays, it's, it, the, the, to be able to schedule, it's gonna take two or three weeks to schedule both the trust and the task force and then report back to the board.
I, I guess then I would ask that, you know, to the extent, um, I don't know how they're gonna come down. I mean, I don't know what they're, I can't read their minds, but I guess our, our position would be then, under the terms of the bylaw, you know, the bylaw says you have to provide two onsite. That's it. And then if you want, if you wanna ask the board to do the off-site or the in lieu of, in lieu of contribution, then it's at the planning board's discretion. So, then I would have to say that to the extent that the, that the trust were to say to us that we are not able to sell lots, then we would just provide for the two onsite, because we can't do that. We just can't allow that kind of a restriction on us. So, as long as the board understands that.
That's clear.
Yeah, could, could we work something like that into a decision where, just, just for, for the principle of moving us forward? Could we, we come to that agreement where you have that agreement that?
What, what is written into this decision and voted on by the board will certainly be vetted and approved by the, the trust and the task force.
Well, I, I.
And we were looking for their input.
Yeah.
Right.
And we were more, more so, more.
Right, and you got their input, it's just since those meetings.
But since they hadn't thought about the possibility of selling lots, that's the only issue.
Bec- because you would be seeking to have additional input, I suppose that I need to tell you that you would have to actually then, when you close the hearing, understand that the decision would be, I, I, actually, I have to quote you, binary to the extent of, it would either be that if we could not come to a decision that would be in, in keeping with what the task force says, then it would just automatically default to the, um, to onsites. And then the fractional payment.
I would, I'd be good with.
Well, that, the bylaws states that, yeah, the bylaw states that it's, it's, it's the two homes. And if this board approves it, Mrs. Evangelista, then it's, then it's the contributions, but it.
Generally, generally, Jill, we can't make a decision pending another board.
That's why I said what I said. Well, we're not.
Yeah.
The, the point would be.
That's why I would recommend to continue it.
And, and we really don't want to do that, because this is a matter that is just gonna hold us up for a very long time, because we're gonna have to get on everybody's schedule. So, I guess my point would be, is, is, it's either, you're gonna, okay, go ahead.
Let me ask this. What about a decision that said you will do X, which X is what was already agreed by the task force and the, and the, and the trust? Or if you wish not to, then you will provide two homes?
Absolutely fine.
And pay two point, and pay point two.
And point two fractional, absolutely.
But we don't have X. We don't have, we don't have, uh.
Well, we, we do. Howard has it. He.
No, no, we doesn't.
We just discussed how the, the, the trust and the task force would accept the, the fractional payment.
You're just talking fractional payment?
Yeah.
We're talking all of it, right?
Yeah, but the point is, 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 it's, it is our ability to choose whether or not it would be the onsite. And if it's the off-site, then it would be sub.
Wait, hold on a second. It's our ability.
Well, no, the, the way your bylaw is written, the way your bylaw is written is there must be two affordable homes onsite plus a point two fractional share. If the applicant were to desire to make a payment in lieu, then only this board can permit that. You have full and total discretion. However, an applicant does not have to make an off-site, a, a payment in lieu. They are permitted always to provide two onsites. So, my point would be, I think Mr. Lucatilia actually hit it on the head by saying, look, Jill, this is the decision then. You got an obligation. We're gonna decide this tonight. You will put two homes plus point two fractional payments, or, you know what? And this could be a condition, cause you do it all the time. Or you can agree to work with the task force and, and, and provide them with a payment that's satisfactory, because they, and they give it to you. We already know they're willing to work with us, and I think, I, quite frankly, I really do believe that they're gonna come back and say to you, yeah, you can sell the lots if you need to, you can. You're good people. We know what you're willing to do. You know, we know you wanna build off-site. I think they will. But I can't, I can't allow a, a, a decision not to have both components because of that.
I think from what, from what I, I only communicated with, uh, reading his minutes and a couple other people, either the task or the trust, whichever. And they're looking for, I think, let's say, bottom line average, close to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
When this is all done. How is that gonna happen if you're gonna sell lots and all we do is the six percent out of lot?
Because even if we, because we're not gonna only sell lots. We can't afford to only sell lots.
The, the, the low of, of a lot and, and, and the high of, of selling a home, it, it's expected that, that, that average across twenty-two.
I think they were only averaging out to like four hundred and fifty thousand a house. Each lot times twenty-two. So, they're figuring they're gonna get, you know, over a half a million dollars when this project is done.
We believe the same.
Then they, then they're able.
We believe the same thing. And if it doesn't, it's a very bad project for us, quite frankly.
Well, I, I.
Can you, can you, um, word how this, uh, motion would, would read right now?
Is, is the, is the board ready to?
Well, I just, I'd like to hear it first, cause I've, it's been going around it. And I'd like to just hear it once and then, um, see what the board thinks to that, because I tend to agree with what Harry's talking about, uh, in concept, and I just would like to hear it.
May I ask if this is actually a motion that needs to be made? Or if this is, uh, closing this hearing and Howard writing a decision that we could tweak if we had it, we were very happy with it?
In, in, or you, you, you don't have to formalize exactly what may change in the future, but if, if you're looking to, to formalize it and, and have it voted on, it could be that the board, uh, recognizes that the applicant will either develop, will, will, will meet their inclusionary housing bylaw.
Commitment by?
By, um.
Can I help?
On-site home.
Yes.
Help?
Either two homes onsite and the fractional payment, or per the, the agreed.
Exhibit A.
Agreed upon method, uh, approved by the trust and task force or something to that effect.
How, how would you word that, less than a part, or as?
Right, I, I would actually do, I'd move to close the hearing. And I would put it subject to, um, the condition that the decision be written, almost identical to what Mr. Snyder said. So, you would say that the, with relative to the inclusionary bylaw, that the applicant shall provide two onsite homes and a payment for a point two fractional interest under section, um, F, or shall issue to the town payments in lieu pursuant to a decision issued by the task force.
Shall issue payments in lieu? What'd you say?
Oh, shall issue payments in lieu to the town.
Yep.
Pursuant to decision issued by the task force. Pardon me, I apologize, yes.
And Tilly, right, Tilly, what, so if this ends up being in their, in their lap, would you be okay with that?
I'm not okay with it. I'm, I'm, I've always, in every board I've ever been on, we don't make decisions on somebody else, another board deciding or recommending to us. It's, it's, I don't, legally, I'm, I don't think it is legit, is it?
Of course it is.
The trust and the task force is advisory to the planning board. They're, they're, they're not a permitting authority like the CONCOM or.
They make me recommendation.
Right.
Yeah.
So, what if you guys just sold the whole subdivision to somebody? Just the by.
So, somebody would, the new developer would be the one responsible.
Would they, they would still?
They own the decision.
Yeah, they own the decision. We haven't explored, we haven't done anything to.
We don't plan on doing it, but if we did, they would own the decision.
The way it would, yeah, so.
So, they would be held to the same.
They would be considered, they'd become the developer essentially.
I suppose if you sold only lots in there, all lots, built new houses, we would get, the town would get at six percent of twenty-two lots, at two fifty a lot would come to like three hundred and thirty thousand.
And they'd be belly up.
And we would, we would go under.
Oh, really? Not really.
Well, that would be...
You guys need to sell houses to make money?
What do you think of that?
That's why we're saying to you...
I did see the purchase price of some of those parcels in the real estate transactions sections of the local...
So in other words, you're motivated.
You're exceptionally motivated. In addition to that, truly, we have, we really did tell the task force that we would be willing to help identify offsites. We wouldn't do that if we were committed.
How much time do we have if we close the public hearing?
Sixty, well, under...
Decision due date within 90 days of public hearing.
Ninety days. So if we close the public hearing, is there any reason why we can't get this back from them, their recommendation? And then finalize it?
We can't get new material.
Yeah, because it's new information, right?
We can't get new material.
My point is, we already have their decision.
You can't accept new information when you...
Because all it is, it isn't because you're saying that you would either...
We're saying we're going to take what their recommendation is.
We could literally write it that we either, they either say, we can, you know, we either do it, or we're taking in new information. Let me, give me one second.
It's not really clear to...
No, I'm trying to think if there's a way, because I don't know that necessarily it really is new information because it's just about defining what we pay. Because you can always go back to modify a decision without even public notice if it's not considered to be a material alteration. So if the clarification was...
Oh, excuse me. Isn't this a... Oh, all right, go ahead. I'm sorry. I was thinking of special permits.
But it's not, not a problem.
Yeah.
Because I think that the way in which the decision is being structured is, you're telling us, look, you've got to provide two plus the two. We're telling you that we're only going to accept the payment in lieu if they allow us to sell the lots based on, so you can, you could put the decision in there. You could basically say...
We're not getting new information for planners.
No, but we could always, I mean, I don't see it...
Well, that's not the...
And you'll be discussing the decision and it's...
I was hoping there would be something, you came in with a, what do they call that? A smoking gun all of a sudden, where you're bringing out lots. You never mentioned that before. Do you recall that? And I think they haven't had a discussion about it.
Last year we discussed it. We just didn't bring it up again this year. We did in the first meeting.
Well, let's...
But they're paying six percent.
Harris pays four percent.
So that...
That's because, that was before the bylaw was changed.
Add one piece of information. I just did some rough calculations. And if they sold half the lots, half, which there's no way, you know, from what I know, that they would do that. Even if they sold half and built the others at their rate, the town is getting $625,000. It's a big number.
I mean, it's huge.
Even if they sold half the lots, which is not...
How can that be if they're averaging out to four?
Yeah.
I'd like to see that written down in your math diagram.
Well, they'd get 330,000 if they just sold all lots. So if they build half of them, that's going to be another 300 plus thousand.
What I'd like to suggest to try to, I'd like to try to move, because we've been talking about this for a long time now. And I'd like to suggest that someone make a motion to close the public...
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to close the public here. Well, should you ask for, I wouldn't make a motion like that until...
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
I think you have one thing I want to mention. I'm Garrett Sted, 48 Searle Street, and I will sign, Larry. I just wanted to ask if the board could recall the many mention of the condition of Searle Street before condition. And there was mention that there may be a condition to protect the road from the potential of a condition to protect the road from further deterioration. I just ask them that the board recall all those conversations.
Can you, I didn't hear the first one, the fan, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. It was basically the same thing. There was many conversations over the course of all these hearings on the condition of Searle Street before condition. There was mention of the potential of a condition to protect the road from further deterioration due to these efforts. And I'm just asking that that be remembered.
When the decision is drafted, I'll be revisiting all the meeting minutes and recordings and notes to make sure that everything that's been mentioned in terms of what conditions could be is placed into the draft, and then it will be discussed by the board.
Okay, the condition's been established yet?
No.
Okay.
But, right, can I, just one little thing. There is no lots in any of this, correct?
There's no homes either.
You said there's no homes, but there's units. They keep saying units.
Because your bylaw that you had pulled from was a multifamily structure that was condominium units, pursuant to which my guess is that there was density and other benefits given. So that's why it's a unit. And I could probably pull out 20 if I got on my cellphone and show you the typical way it's drafted.
But it came from the Newbury area.
Right. And you know what? I've been thinking while everybody's talking. I don't think it's new information because all we're asking for is point of clarification with regard to the task force. It's a simple thing and it's not new information. It simply isn't. We've discussed it ad nauseam.
I don't, yeah, I don't think it is. So I'd like to go back to Harry's motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, and I move that we close the public hearing for turning the lease subdivision.
Second.
Hearing a motion to close the public hearing in a second, is there any discussion?
I guess finally discussion. My question is, if the Affordable Housing Task Force looks at the possibility of, say, half the property being sold as lots only, and they decide that they want to alter their recommendation in terms of what they're looking for for in lieu payments, that can still be done? In other words, to speak to, well, to speak to the point of new information, is it new information if the Affordable Housing Task Force changes their recommendation?
No, because they never, it's just a point of clarification. They never set forth the fact that they acknowledged that it would be based on lot sales or home sales. So it's really truly just a point of clarification.
So if we go back to them, or whoever goes back to them and says, "You realize that half of these could be sold as lots, are you still good with your six percent?" And they say, "Well, we want to change it."
Then we, if...
If that's something that the applicant can't agree with, then they're going to build the two onsite.
Which is fine. I mean, the town at the end of the day, it gets probably 600,000 and...
Even with the half it does, that's kind of why I think you'll find that it's a point of clarification because they're not going to see it as material. Because they know that we're not in a position to sell the majority of the lots.
And we'd probably be willing to limit.
Okay, I just wanted to...
You limit the number that you would sell as lots?
Yeah.
And what would you set that limit at?
Say a third of them.
Okay. I'm good with that. I'm totally good with that.
Any other discussion?
So is that in the minutes, Wendy? That date.
And he agreed to it?
To no more than a third of the lots being sold as.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's great.
And just, just to take that down to a detailed level, a third being seven or eight because it's 22. You see them say...
It's really 20 because you got the point two, so we'll call it seven.
Okay. Seven. I think that, I'm totally happy. I think Tilly should be happy. Her concern was shared by me.
That was a good clarification.
I think that, I'm totally, that's great.
So...
Okay, so wait.
You're good guys. I like that.
Thank you. So any more discussion? Okay, seeing no more discussion, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Oh, Tilly, come on.
I'm trying.
That's, that's three to one.
I am interested. He's set the number at seven.
That was a good proposal.
Doesn't that make you happy?
Three, one, and one. So the public hearing has closed, right? And so now, how do we tie this part up, Howard? Do we need to make a motion about providing two homes or shall issue payments in lieu?
I think Howard understands what he is putting in the motion.
I do. And if you want it written to the record, then you can advise that to get the opinion from the task force and the trust. If you want it in the meeting minutes, then you can say that the planning board has charged the town planner with seeking out that material right there.
Matter of clarification.
As a matter of clarification for the board to consider when they're writing their decision.
I'm going to echo what Howard just...
It's not even a motion. It's just a direction to the planner because the public hearing's closed. Yep.
Just tell them, Mr. Chairman. Just tell them.
Respectfully direct, right?
Tell me, we give the...
Great. Let the minute reflect that.
Oh, I thought I did that by saying what Howard said. The minute reflects what Howard said.
Well, how's the task force going to meet and to other? So that they give in on how... They should have been here.
Yeah, I'm going to contact them directly tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, approve. I would like to make a motion to release the M account number Release the account balance of $5,304.92.
Yeah, if I can, sorry.
Discussion.
Right, your second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, what I have done is because this is slightly a unique effort. And it is more for, just a CYA type of thing. I have written up a certification to get a vote for the amount. And because it was established as, informally as a bond, I have filled out a Form J. And the attorney for the developer has filled that out. So the board is going to be not only voting and signing a certificate of vote, but they will be also voting to sign a Form J to release the bonds.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I'd also vote to release the bond.
The Form J.
The Form J to endorse the Form J. Wow, is it getting a little late, kids? It's getting a little late.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, good night and thank you.
To clarify, Form J, applicant's request for release or partial release of lots or deposit.
Deposit.
And written into that is the attachment that states the planning board is asked to approve as to the following items, the planting of trees.
I'd like to make a motion to release the Form J for Harrisway subdivision street trees bond.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So it's been motioned seconded. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Great. Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion.
The court signs the Form J in blue.
That's all.
I lost it. I'd like to make a motion to release M account number 26448 for superior steel. In the amount of, thank you, sir, $1,904.70.
There's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Just for information for the board, this M account was established for the technical review of a special permit. And that special permit ended up being denied. So there are not any special conditions that need to be followed up to see if they've satisfied them all or not. They've never got to that part.
Did they have the expense of legal aid and all that hula? Did that come out of that account? They must have, they had it scheduled and everything, but nobody showed up.
That was years ago, yeah. The applicant did show up and then went through.
They went to the Concom and that was the end of them, huh?
Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, unanimous. That closes out the M accounts. Any members have anything they want to talk about right now? Any other concerns or do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Question.
Question.
What about this?
Signing is ministry room.
The issue of the building supply. Building supply in the parking lot.
Hand it out in your packet.
That's a little deep, but like...
You can, well, also the person that sent me the correspondence said that they would be in attendance and they might be able to better explain.
I, that's what I was assuming.
Yeah, motion to put that off until we, well, if I just make a, if I just make a motion to adjourn, does, I'm sorry, if I just make a motion to adjourn, that sort of pushes it out automatically to the next one, doesn't it?
I'll continue.
That's old business.
It does. Works for me.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 10:14 PM.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Did everybody sign the myars?
Yes, I think so.
They took them.
Okay, all right, Tim.